Owen here?
Owen here?
He did surgery and he's working on it.
Okay. Oh, okay. Okay, I'll just need to be up, um, up. Brought up as panelist. Correct. Okay, so I'm on now, so I just need to be brought over as, yes, please. Thank you. How are you, Leo? Great.
I want to try to hypo. They're doing their executive function, which you kind of touch on.
Thank you. Okay, I'm good when you're good.
Of course you know that I'm gonna go just the executive function for the twenty. Are we good?
I'm good when you're good. I think so.
Welcome, welcoming the crowd. Why don't we open up the meeting with a?
Michelle Kirkby here.
Leo Room here.
Will Horn here.
Diana Fashella here.
We're on Zoom.
So we'll kick it off with public input. Members of the public will be welcome to comment during the public input period, either here in the room or through Zoom. If you are on Zoom, raise your Zoom hand. And in either case, we'd like to see you. So on Zoom, if you can, put your camera on. Fill your name, address. And we ask that you follow school policy for public input, including speaking for no more than three minutes and only on topics under the peruse of the school. So is there, is there any public input? Sure, come on up.
My name is Courtney Young. The book I Am Billie Jean King by Brad Miltzer being retained in the Memorial School Library. Before I delve into my appeal, allow me to pose a few thought provoking questions to shed light on the matter at hand. Do you feel comfortable discussing the intricacies of sexuality and romantic relationships with a kindergartner? Is it appropriate for kindergarten children to be exposed to topics such as sexuality and romantic feelings? Should we expose them to concepts that even many adults find challenging to navigate? I debated whether to address you tonight, understanding that your decision has likely already been made. Yet I couldn't stay silent knowing the impact this could have on my daughter and countless other children. It's disheartening that each and every one of you failed to reach out to me to inform me that my book reconsideration appeal is even on the agenda for tonight, which I specifically asked of Superintendent Marzen in my appeal letter. Unfortunately, I know for a fact this isn't the first book appeal where your committee has not notified the parent. This entire process lacks transparency. Despite the odds, I'm here to advocate not just for my child, but for every parent and student who shares the belief that I Am Billie Jean King is unsuitable for kindergarten. My presence isn't to burden you, but to ensure that every child's educational journey is respectful and appropriate. It's clear I'm not alone in the sentiment within the Medfield Public School System. Perhaps we can work together to uphold standards that benefit all our children. I believe it's important to address the fairness of the reconsideration committee's decision making process. I'm concerned that the group setting might inadvertently discourage individuals from expressing dissenting opinions. Might I suggest allowing members to vote individually and anonymously, ensure that every perspective is heard and considered, potentially preventing situations where someone might feel hesitant to voice their support from an alternative viewpoint? In Superintendent Marzen's letter, he cites multiple items and resources he used to come to his decision to retain the book. He fails to mention how he used these items to come to his decision. What I'm asking for is clarity into the state guidance. Where in any of those resources does it state that sexuality, divorce, romantic feelings are concepts appropriate for kindergarten? I'm not requesting this book be pulled from all libraries. The Memorial School Library is only accessible for children and prepaid at first grade, and I have not seen any evidence these concepts are recommended by any educational standards for children six and under. The book I Am Billie Jean King may highlight admirable traits of leadership and equality for women in sports, but does it need to include intimate aspects of Billie Jean King's personal life? For instance, discussing her romantic feelings for both a man and a woman. Imagine trying to explain such complexities to a young child during bedtime reading. As a parent, I'm not opposed to discussing difficult topics with my child, but there's a time and a place for such discussions, and a kindergarten library book just isn't it. Inclusivity, teaching kindness, understanding their differences in family structures are all concepts I want my children to understand. And while you argue that the book isn't mandatory reading, its presence in the library and more importantly, on display in the library and the fact that it ended up in my daughter's backpack suggests otherwise. In closing, let's prioritize the innocence of our children and refrain from imposing adult ideologies and planting seeds in their heads through age inappropriate content on their young impressionable minds. I implore you to reconsider the decision to retain I Am Billie Jean King in the Memorial School Library guided by both common sense and morality. Thank you.
Hello.
Yeah, just one second. Oh, I'm sorry. As a general during public input, we do not respond. I don't intend to respond, and other than clarifying two points. One, for Courtney, an apology relative to the response to you. There was a technical glitch that we discovered literally today. We're seeing the letter, which I did read today. We did not see it. And that is a technical glitch, and I would just leave it at that. Second point, though, just for clarity, this item is on the agenda. It's to clarify that this is a, the appeal is here, and we will talk to it. No decisions will be made tonight from school. That's not, that's not our process. Right, so it is on the agenda, we will talk about it on the agenda. But there are no, there was never an intention.
But that's something else to be known.
Yes, and sincerely, I think we, I referred to the appeal, but the letter came through eventually today. Correct, yes, I saw that, and that is, that's something I, we really try hard to at least respond and acknowledge, because that's something we are moving to do. And the, you know, third point is just a thank you. All input is always appreciated.
Just to be clear, the superintendent did notify the chair and vice chair of all the appeal. You protested against the emails. It said, "See chair" on it. Never went to any of you, we checked that today.
It did go to me, so I notified them, but they did not see the email.
Yeah, and that, I should have, I might, at that point, also checked prior to. But that is what, like, today was the first I read the letter. We were aware of the appeal. So we will cover that on the agenda. I don't even mind, because there may be some others moving that up, in case you're not here for the whole meeting. We will cover it in a bit. Is there other public input?
Hello, again, I'm Spencer Jolene, I'm Clark Road, one of the few openly gay seniors here. To start, I'd like to say that I'm frankly disappointed in what this town has turned into. In my eighteen years of leading in Medfield, I've never felt so single without and alienated by just the people of this town. And the most disappointing part about it is that's mainly from the parents. Let me make it very clear that I hundred percent agree that a parent is entitled to keeping their children away from any material that they still feel, sorry. But I would just like to say that this is a public school. There is over twenty-five hundred students in our district, which means that give or take two-hundred-and-fifty of us here need these books. I understand that might be a difficult concept for a young child to understand of a woman leaving her husband for another woman, but let me ensure that the confused or frightened thoughts a child may have about this has nothing to do about why she left, but why it's a bad thing for two women to like each other. Whether you agree or not with homosexuality, if I had heard my mother talk negatively about a same-sex marriage at such a young age, I know that I would have had to lie to her my entire life, and that would have been a really difficult secret, as I did tell her I was gay when I was five. And she would have no insight to the biggest part of me, like I just said, because I was five. So it's been past thirteen years that it's been a shared thing between the two of us. And also, I would just like to say that my parents are divorced, and when I was faced with this in eighth grade, I didn't really have anyone to turn to to talk about this with. And I know that if I were younger than I was at fourteen, I would have no idea what was happening with my family. So a book like this could help someone exactly like me. Divorced parents, just to know that someone else, it is a normal thing, and it's okay to have divorced parents. And then just a book about someone being gay and having success, because again, that is okay, and we need to know that, that's fine. And to finish off, I'd like to say that my parents' divorce or my sexuality do not make me confused or frightened, but the parents that ridicule me for saying the two simple words, "I'm gay," do.
Any other public input?
No one has raised their hand.
Hi, Chris Potts, Seventh Street. Different topic, but I just, I know there wouldn't be an opportunity to mention this tonight. Just two separate things, I know that you're gonna be talking.
About policies later. But this actually rolls into the ADA policy, the school district goals and objectives. I'm looking at the school start times information, and I'm feeling like, based on the discussions and the minutes that have been posted, I feel like it's really being rushed that you guys are gonna be trying to make a decision on this this year. It just feels really rushed, looking through the minutes and the issues that have come up and the things that have been discussed, especially on the educator side of the, of the House. A lot of other districts that have gone through this, and I know that there's a learning process that happens with other districts that you can pursue. But we even had, there hasn't even been a public forum on this yet. And if you're gonna be voting on this come June, I just think it's a mistake to rush it through by the end of this year. And again, to the larger question of the ADA, school district goals and objectives, I think something like this could be a really rich discussion as part of that, which I also didn't, don't think really happened. And I noticed on the policy manual review that it said this would be discussed by school committee, and I don't think you guys have really talked in depth about the ADA policy at all. So I think when you're talking about school district goals and objectives, that really looking at how you put through new initiatives and what the process should be is something that would be really good to capture in that. And that's just my feedback. Thanks.
Thank you. And I think both topics are, the policy is on the agenda, and the school start time committee, I believe, is on the agenda as well. Our school start time committee update is on the agenda. Any, anything else?
Nothing on Zoom.
Okay, thank you. So what we'll do, let's do the consent agenda first, and then, again, it's not a huge group, but I'm, it's okay with everyone else to talk about the book. Just move that up on the agenda. So the consent agenda, really, there's two items on it. The regular meeting minutes from March twenty-first, two thousand twenty-four, and the donations, and I don't, I don't have the narrative.
Yeah, sure. So donations, four hundred eighty-two dollars and forty-two cents from the Dale Street PTO to be deposited in the Dale Street gift account. Five hundred dollars from Gail Duffy, former high school teacher retired, to be deposited into the Medfield High School gift account. One hundred dollars from David Coyle to be deposited in the CPAC account. Six hundred thirty-two dollars from Brittany Whitfield to be deposited in the CPAC account. And two thousand three hundred thirty-five dollars anonymous donation to be deposited into MHS football account. I ask that you approve as presented.
Any questions, or is there any reason to call one of it?
I don't have any.
Motion to approve?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, great. Thank you. So for new businesses, I was gonna say, just in the interest of, in case you're not here for the whole, the whole meeting, I would move up the appeal of the superintendent's decision on the library book. And so we'll cover that now. Again, just to clarify, right now, the process is, the appeal has been made, and we as a, as a school committee are going to be asked shortly, one, to read the book, two, to review the report from Dr. Marzen from the committee that you've had established, as well as the report that you have. And then in a follow-up meeting, we would then discuss, you know, feedback, how, you know, that we may have, and then either affirm or not affirm the decision from the superintendent. So procedurally, that's, that's where we are right now, just that has come forward. I think it may not hurt, just to clarify, the process that was followed to get it to this point.
Sure. In other words, what, yeah. Yeah, yeah, so the reconsideration committee was put together by Christine Power. They met, they went through, and it's all in your materials here. I know everyone else doesn't have it out there, but it's all in the school committee materials online. And it's online on Christine's website for the department, for the Director of Instruction and Innovation. So that whole process goes through. They have, if there's a complainant that wants to come forward, they can even do it written or be in person. The complainant's able to present their case to them. The committee goes through, reads the books, looks at the material, et cetera, et cetera. They make a decision, they forward that decision to me. I go through all the materials, I list all the materials in my, in what I looked at in my response, and then I make a decision based on what I've looked at and what their decision is. And then I send that to the complainant. So at that point, I put in that letter that they can, if the person wants to appeal my decision, they can do that to the school committee. And again, this process was always about having people that represent the community make the final decision, right? That's what this has always been about, that. There's a reconsideration committee, which are all the professionals that deal with instruction and learning all the time. They make a recommendation to the school superintendent. That school superintendent makes a decision based on that. And then the five folks that live in the community can either say, "No, Jeff, you're wrong," or we affirm it. So that's kind of what we've done in the past, and that's where we are right now.
So and for the committee, any questions? And at this stage, I'd rather it be more about process and, you know, why a decision was made one way or the other. Not all of us have reviewed the book or the decision. So any, any questions about process?
So right now, Dr. Marzen's decision was appealed, and now we are going to vote at a later date. If we.
I think you're correct, or the book should be taken out, right? I mean, more or less. When do we do that? There's no timeline on when.
Yeah, I would like to do that. The book is relatively short, so we'd like to do that within our next meeting.
It should not, well, May sixth is our town meeting, so we can't do that. It would be May twenty-third.
May twenty-third, right.
Yeah, May twenty-third.
So that's, that's how we do that. And if, if there was any confusion or alarm or expectation that we were going to vote, I apologize for that. If you don't come up that frequently, we have to check our, you know, ourselves to make sure we have processed weight, right? And that's, you know, that's what we, what we have in mind. So if there's no other questions on that, then we can go to student advisory.
So we'd have to, just so, like, so we need to get you copies of the book, right? So you have that, and whether, you can tell me whether you want to share the book, or you want me to get five copies, or wherever you want that to happen. And then you have the copies of my report, the reconsideration committee's report, and, and the letters from the complaint, et cetera. So that's all the materials you got, you go through. Fortunately, it's not looked like the last time we had very long books to read last time. This one's a little quicker.
Yeah, so that's where, May twenty-third would be, would be out there. And a question for everyone as well. The reports, are those?
Those are online.
They're online.
And they're in your materials.
And, and, okay, so they are available for us and for the public, yes?
Okay. So those are online two places. They're online in the Director of Instruction Inclusions website, which you can scroll down, is there. And it's also online, the superintendent, the school committee materials of this meeting.
Okay, thank you. So moving to the first topic on the agenda for new businesses, student advisory. And do we have?
Hello, I'm Michael Ross, the representative to the school committee for the class of two thousand twenty-five. Since last time I've talked about what we've done, we completed the Chipotle fundraiser for decorations for prom. And we've continued planning prom, and the tickets for prom were sent out last week. And we're just excited for prom, moving towards that at a pretty rapid rate, only a couple of weeks away now. And just kind of a thank you to the Medfield Cares About Prevention for providing the buses, which students are highly encouraged to take and expected to take as well.
Michael, what the fundraiser go? There were mixed reviews about Chipotle, so I want to know how it went.
Yes, it went.
Nice.
Yeah, it went pretty well, yeah. We, we had a decent profit, and I went personally, like, to get my own food, and it was great, so.
Thank you, Michael. Yeah, thank you.
Hello, I'm Ava Walsh. I'm here on behalf of Julia Keating for the class of two thousand twenty-four. Before I start, I do want to note that Tess Baki for the class of two thousand twenty-six, her softball game unexpectedly went. her softball game unexpectedly went late, so she's not able to make it. So with it being the last quarter of our senior year, we don't have much left to do. We just finished our pennant fundraiser, which we are really happy about, just to give us a little leeway with our funds for the end of the year. And especially to fund the buses for our night at launch, which will be the night before graduation for any seniors interested. And we're just excited about the fun festivities planned for the end of senior year. And we're also excited for the junior class prom, or the prom that the junior classes put together.
Busy time of year for you guys, very busy. Thank you. The thing I wrote down, it's not much left to do. There's a, there's a sigh of relief there, like, I, I know, I know, you know, what it's, that is a tough junior year around now. Till, till about now. Yeah, so, so welcome on that, but no, that, that is, congratulations on getting to that point. And my, my only, what was the night before graduation? Yeah, sure.
So the senior class rents out launch, which is a trampoline park. So we rent that out the night before graduation for all the seniors, just to have a fun night together. And yeah, that's pretty much it.
No, it's exciting, because I remember it's a fun month, but a, a great week. So we will, is this probably the last time we see you?
Yes, me.
For here, anyway.
I don't know about Julia. Yeah, maybe. Yeah, I don't know.
Try not to have a meeting the week of, you know, that last week, the week of graduation.
Oh, yeah.
It would be no fun. Okay, no good. Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you. Okay, yeah, thanks very much. So then, next up is approval of overnight trips for Medfield High School.
We have five trips. Robert's gonna come up and introduce everyone and just give you a quick overview of each trip. We're excited to provide these opportunities for our kids each year, and next year is a big year for trips.
It is indeed. Good evening, everyone. It's good to see you. Thank you for having me. Robert Parker, the principal here at the high school. And it's my pleasure to introduce our staff, who are going to be chaperoning these trips that we are seeking approval for. And before I do that, I just want to thank them. All of our trips, any of our overnights, whether they're, you know, domestic trips or trips overseas, require a lot of planning, a lot of organizing, and they do it all sort of behind the scenes, as well as taking the time during these trips, whether it's on a long weekend or a, a school vacation away from their families, to provide our students with these experiences as well. So I just want to thank them for, for all their work. So as Jeff noted, we do have five trips that we're seeking approval for. I'll go in chronological order. Mark Nickerson is here. Mark is the head coach of our state champion girls basketball team. Mark is seeking approval to take the girls' team to play in a tournament in Orlando over the December break. It's a trip we've done a couple of times before. Jason Belik, our music department chair, is here to seek approval for a music trip in March of two thousand twenty-five down to Orlando. So he'll talk a bit more about that. And then we have three language trips. Nikki Welling is here. Nikki's a French teacher here at the high school, seeking approval for a trip to France during next April break. Paula Hamilton is one of our Spanish teachers. Paula is here seeking approval for a trip to Costa Rica for a Spanish language trip. And Sarah Higger is here. Sarah is one of our art teachers. This is a new trip for us. We're excited. It's gonna involve a lot of our art students, who are gonna be going to Italy and then on to Prague. So very exciting stuff coming up. So they're each gonna take a few minutes to talk a little bit about the trip, the scope of the trip, and how it ties into the work that we do in the classroom. So who would like to go first? Nikki, raise your hand. Nikki Welling, who will be taking students to France.
Hello, I'm Nikki Welling, French teacher. The France trip runs every two years. I went last year with eighteen students. One of them was Michael Roth and his brother. So this trip is a little different next year for the destination, because these, it has to do with the school zones, because our students stay with the family. They each have their own family that they're matched with for the first six nights of the trip. And that will be near, in the Loire Valley, where all the beautiful castles are. So yeah, six nights with the family stay, and then they spend two days, they go to French school. They don't have to do the work, but they're, they're like rock stars, so it's a good time for them. Then we, so six days there with the family, six nights, and then we regroup as a group. And we, we have our own guide and driver the whole time, our own charter bus. And we'll go to Saint Malo. I don't know if you've been to France, but Saint Malo is the highlight of the trip. We spent two nights there. And we also visit the D-Day beaches. And, yeah, the D-Day beaches. And then on the way back to Paris, we stop at Monet's House in Giverny, a nice highlight. And this time, we'll have our last two nights of our trip in Paris, which include dinner on the Eiffel Tower and some sightseeing. So obviously, the point of the trip is to put their language skills to use that they've learned since sixth grade. So I can't see. Oh, yeah, so obviously, to listen to them talk about themselves, their family, things they like to do, likes, and eating out. Like, I meet them in middle school, actually, so for me to see them in a cafe ordering, it's like a full circle moment for me. So it's just very rewarding, so I hope you'll approve it. We leave a, a year from tonight. Well, last year, they were eighteen. We hope for fifteen to nineteen, so that the price stays in the four thousand range.
Can any student in the high school go, no matter what level of French they're currently in?
Well, originally, it was only juniors and seniors, but I did open it up to sophomores last year, because I needed more students. And that went very well. Six of them went. One of them was Michael.
Any opportunities for supplemental votes to those who can't afford the price tag?
Sadly, no. It has come up. I have a wonderful student right now who would really benefit from scholarship, but there, there is none.
I'm just gonna ask that of every single person that stands up tonight, so just be prepared for that.
It would be nice if we could figure a way, maybe fundraise for the student.
Have, is the staying with families, is that typically what we do, or is that?
Well, with the France trip, yes.
Yeah, okay.
And they each have their own families, so they're not with another Medfield student.
Okay, so each student with their own families, and then is there some kind of process to vet or?
Well, yes, the whole, the company that we work with, Vista's, they vet the families.
I think that's a great experience for people I know who have, get to do the family part of the trip and, like, actually immerse themselves.
Yeah, I mean, it's scary for them the first night, but, knock wood, we haven't had any problems with families, so. The students overcome their fears.
On the off years when we don't go, are French students coming here and doing like this? Do you have like an exchange thing or no?
No, no, I mean, this year in October, we did for the first time, welcome six French teenagers who came here for two weeks in October. But that was the first time.
Thank you. What I'll ask before we vote is, if we wanted to call any one of them out, I'll ask that at the end. I think it would be best to just take them all, you know, try to do that like we do a consent agenda. So.
Hi, I'm Mark Nickerson, girls varsity basketball coach. I'm also a middle school PE and health teacher. And I'm asking for permission to take my basketball team to a tournament in Orlando, Florida, December twenty-sixth through thirty-first. It's a tournament that we've done a couple of times in the past, two thousand fifteen and two thousand seventeen, we took teams down there. It's a great tournament, great competition, a rewarding experience for the girls. I would estimate that we would take somewhere between twelve and fifteen players, depending on our roster. It'll be a varsity basketball trip only, so it wouldn't be a sub-varsity trip. We do run fundraisers throughout the year, clinics, things like that, with the Medfield data, try to raise money to help either families that are having trouble affording it, or trying to make the entire trip more affordable for everybody. The price tag is roughly about two thousand dollars, and that includes hotel and food, and part of the package is actually going into the theme park that there, that is there, which is the Universal Studios. But it's, it's been a great experience for us in the past. I know the girls that have gone on the trips in the past have really enjoyed it. We've played some great competition. It's a, it's a great way to bring the team closer together. And it's something that we'd love to do again with your permission, obviously.
How many games are you guaranteeing?
Three games, so there'll be three games regardless, win or lose.
And no loss on time and learning. I noticed that.
Right.
Well, my question, I think, because, because you're the only one where it's like a team, right? The other ones, I think, kids kind of opt in. And you just mentioned the fundraising, so you, you find a way to do it. But, but so how do you decide if you raised three thousand bucks, if that goes towards a scholarship or towards lowering the price for everybody?
Yeah, so if we had a scholarship need, we'd put it all towards the scholarship, or as much as that would cover that, and then we'd spread out the rest of it.
Okay.
The last time we went in two thousand seventeen, we actually did have a student where we raised the entire package of money for that student, and then leftovers, we spread it out.
Okay.
And going there with state champs on your, on your back.
A lot of pressure.
Coming after you.
I always feel pressure. Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks, Mark.
Hello, I'm Paula Hamilton, Spanish teacher at the high school. And I would like to take our kids to Costa Rica next April vacation. We went last year, I did not go. The school went last year for the first time with Kristen Manning and Emery Fratellino from Blake. And Kristen is going to be the second chaperone with me this year. I'm the, the lead, and she said she would come along, which is a great transition for, for me, to have someone who's already been there. And the reason, we used to go to Spain before COVID. I went with your sister. It was our last trip, right, in two thousand nineteen. And that trip was, it was good, but we, we require, we, as teachers, require a family stay. We think it's really important. That's why we do the trip. And we have found that the family stay in Spain is just not giving us what we had gotten years before. So Costa Rica was new to us last year. Spencer went. It's too bad he's not still here. But, um, so I talked to the kids that came back last year. Everyone loved it, so we decided to keep up with this trip. So what the kids do is we go to San Jose, and then we just spend the night there and drive to a little town where they have a family stay for five nights. The kids last year were buddied up. They had another Medfield student with them. One was alone, because someone had to drop out at the last minute, but in general, they're with another student. What's cool is they're in a really small town, so they're really forced to not walk around and go to a McDonald's or anything like that and do American-y stuff, so they're really forced to immerse themselves in the culture. They don't go to school like they do on the France trip. They do activities every day with our group, and they have all their meals with their families. So they have a significant amount of time just hanging out in this little town with the families. Some of the families are very close friends, and they hang out together, so it's a very homey experience for them, where they can use their language, which is the point, as well as to immerse themselves in the culture, which really happens in this situation. And after five nights there, we go north, northwest, to the Arendal Volcano area, if anyone's familiar, and see some hot springs, and then we travel, slightly different from the last, last year. We're going to go to San Carlos in a different section a couple hours away, where they'll spend the last two nights. And we opted for this one this year, because this area is more like a town where the kids will have more activities to do. Where we went last year was more like of a nature preserve in the middle of nowhere, which was awesome. So this is just a different take on it. I think this year that the kids will benefit from having a little town to walk around or a busier place than where they are in their homestay. And then we come back, and that's just that. Last year, just fourteen kids went. It was the first time since COVID that we had started the trips up again, so, and it was new. So I anticipate that we'll have about twenty-five kids. The Spanish program is pretty big at Medfield High School, so I would be surprised if it weren't that many students that come. We'll see.
What's the little town that they stay with the families in?
It's in the Monte Verde area, and it's called Santa Elena.
What's the rough, rough cost?
It's about thirty-five hundred dollars. And there are no scholarship options or fundraising opportunities for the trip. It is a shame, yeah.
Okay.
Good?
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Hi there. My name is Sarah Higger. I am one of the art teachers at Medfield High School. And we're looking to take some of our students through Central Europe next year on a artistic journey. So it goes from Venice, Salzburg, Vienna, and Prague. And some of the artistic highlights include San Marco in Venice, the Belvedere in Vienna, which holds the kiss, you know, Klimt's kiss, as well as some other amazing art, as well as some glass blowing demos in Venice. And there's actually a glass decorating workshop that the kids will get to take home something with them in Prague as well. And there's a lot more than that, lots of architecture and just things that you just see walking around in town. I know personally, even though I always loved making art, art history was a little bit boring to me when I was studying it in college, until I studied abroad in Venice, actually. And just seeing things in their intended context is just incredibly exciting. Traditionally, the program, I think for the last, like, eight or nine years, we've gone to Italy, which has been amazing. And last year, we used the same company, which is ACIS, and they were phenomenal. That was the first trip I was on. But because we've done the same trip for so long, we were just looking to change things up a little bit. There's lots of beautiful art all over the world and all over Europe. So the eligible students would be juniors and seniors in the classes of Art II, AP US History, or sorry, AP Art History, AP Studio, and then Ceramics III.
And then just, oh, sorry. I was just gonna say, no, no, like, home stays with us, or they're like on buses and hotels and just you travel?
Yes, so we would be having a bus that would take us from place to place. And then students either double or triple up, depending on where we stay in hotel rooms.
Okay, what about, what about rough numbers?
So for the trip, the cost is four nine nine eight. And that includes two meals a day, all airfare, and transportation and hotels.
And what, number of students would, would be?
So it depends how many enroll. We need at least twenty, and I think we can house up to forty. So I think last year on the Italy trip, we had thirty-six, I believe. I'd have to double check with Kate, but usually it's a pretty big trip.
And how many chaperones do they?
Um, I believe it's either one to eight or one to nine. I'd have to double check on that.
And scholarship opportunities or anything like that?
So traditionally, no. I think last year, we might have had a student that acquired their own scholarship, but we don't at the moment buy any.
Thank you.
Awesome, thanks, guys.
Thank you guys for putting this all together. I feel like, you know, personally, I haven't been to some of these places, and it was kind of interesting to see what, you know, what you might choose for high school students to be able to learn additional things. Sorry, Jason, go ahead.
My name is Jason Belik. I'm the K-12 Director of Music. I'm the band director of the high school as well. We're seeking approval to take all of the band, chorus, and orchestra students to Florida, to Orlando. Universal Studios has a program where you get to perform in the park, and then you work. You do some workshops with some music professionals in the area. We traditionally, there's been a, in Medfield, like, in every other year, there would be an overnight trip. This is actually this, we were approved to pursue this trip maybe in two thousand twenty-one, but there was like a, a COVID resurgence right before in, like, January, so we get to cancel it. But we were already, like, kind of like on the five-yard line at that point. The past two years, we've gone to New York City, and then the jazz, the jazz groups just went to New Orleans. jazz groups just went to New Orleans this year. So traveling is a pretty common part of the program. This particular trip to Universal Studios, some schools do Disney, but for example, Medway just did this last year. It's a really common trip for music programs to take. It's four, four days that we're down there in in March. But yeah, I'm happy to answer any questions.
When you're performing at Universal Studios, is it like, again, I'm thinking more, I guess Disney, where they put sometimes the students in the parades and stuff? Like, is there just sections that the students will be in performing for people are kind of passing by? Like, where and how does it work?
There's an area that they use in Universal Studios for these performances. The parade is a specific thing that Disney does. These performances are pretty, they're pretty strict. You have to wear formal concert attire and you have to submit a record, an audio recording and a visual video recording in order to be accepted, so that you meet certain standards. So if we were approved, we would have to go through that process by submitting something from this year.
And what type of professionals do they work with?
They bring in clinicians from, it could be from a college in the area. They sometimes will use like, there's music professionals at the parks that kind of run their music events. And so it could be a workshop on how to, you know, how they do their performances, the variety of opportunities for the kids.
You may have mentioned this. How many students will be going?
160.
What is the cost of the trip?
It's approximately $2,100. The, it could fluctuate $100 one way or the other, depending on about the flights.
Yeah.
Come in.
Did you say 160?
And for fundraising, we have several different things that we do because this is, these are all the kids who are enrolled in our class at the high school. We do not force anyone to go, but we want any student who wants to go to be able to go. So first off, we did like a, I would say a straw poll where I sent out some information to families and asked, would you be interested? And at that time, we also asked, would families be interested in donating to a scholarship fund? And we certainly haven't got responses from everyone yet, but at this time, we've had several parent, families have already volunteered several thousand dollars into the pot to pay for any student who could go. The Medfield Music Association also gives us several thousand dollars every time we go on a trip like this. This year, they pledged multiple thousands of dollars. It wasn't needed, but it's there. We also have two large fundraising events planned that would, it would be unlikely to be able to meaningfully lower the cost of an individual student's trip, given that there are 160 of them. But the goal is to provide the financial support to any student who would need it to go. And we have been successful in that, in the trips we've done the past few years.
How do you manage the chaperones on this particular trip?
You know, so when we went to New York, we had 150. And we put it out to the faculty first. And it's amazing here, the faculty are just so eager to be a part of these trips. I have a feeling that something Universal Studios would be even easier to find. But we certainly, I, to New York, we had two administrators go, Brenda Hagan and Heather Mendoza. They were amazing. And then Heather Mendoza went on the most recent one also to New Orleans. And I've also reached, I've already reached out to the nursing department to see if anyone of them would like to, if we, this was to be approved, if they'd like to come with us. We don't seem to have any, lack of people who want to come.
And this is freshmen versus seniors?
Yes.
Pretty much all of Bandirama will be going?
All of Bandirama, yeah. It's a lot of them.
It's on Florida.
Yeah. The gym was very full. I'm just imagining all of them headed to Logan. That's all.
It was when we were in New York City, they all had to cross the street at the same time. And their town does not let us stop lights in it. So they were, they were in awe of traffic.
I bet they were. Well, thanks for the information.
Thank you. Thanks, Jason.
So any, is there any of these, if we, if we were to vote, is there any reason to call any of these out?
No, I don't, I don't want to call any of them. I think this is amazing to hear about all these opportunities that our students get, you know, and just some of the things I've been made aware of, you know, more recently is the, you know, the socioeconomic divide that even exists here in Medfield. And I'm happy to hear many of them are, you know, tried to address that. And, you know, I remember the French teacher mentioning that a student who would actually very much benefit from that. And so that's not a problem we can solve today. But perhaps there's something that MCPE or some organizations or PTO could, you know, put a percentage aside for a scholarship fund or something that doesn't need to be publicized, but, you know, have a teacher who knows a student who could speak on their behalf to petition, you know, it doesn't have to go publicly through us or anything like that. But I'm sure we have, I mean, we all know students and folks in our communities that can benefit from that. So I guess I'd like to just put a bug in the ear of some folks around that. So because we all know these great programs are great and some of us have been blessed with the opportunity to travel abroad. And it changed my world to travel numerous countries I've been to and year in to do again someday. But again, I think it's, you know, it is eye opening and I think it's a big factor for folks.
Yeah, I would just echo that comment, Leo. And I would say that even on, you know, the recent, the DC trip, you know, we're looking at about 10% of our students that need some form of scholarship in the last couple of years. So I think we gotta put our heads together and figure out, you know, what we can do in terms of fundraising for, to support our families, to support our kids, that everyone has the opportunity to do some of these, these great adventures.
We have some wonderful fundraising. MMA is amazing, you know, MCPE and PTOs. And I don't know if there's some way to, you know, organize it in some manner about, you know, whether it's some sort of decision to parse off a portion each time into some sort of unified pot or some, something along those lines. And again, I'm spitballing here thinking aloud, but as I'm hearing about these opportunities all at once, you know, $4,000 is, $3,500 is a large amount for some families. Outside that, Mr. Chair, no, I don't have an objection. In fact, I'll call the vote and say, move to approve all the trips.
All the trips as published in the agenda?
Yep.
Second.
Second, okay, good. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And just one comment. Thank you. I know that the leaders who are up here, it's not something you have to do, it's something you want to do, you want to do it for your students. I heard loud and clear enthusiasm and excitement about, hey, this is what we're doing. And I, I suspect it's like, how can it be great for the kids? So, so thank you sincerely that you are coming forward. It is great to hear, even speaking of the April trip, our kids, you know, go, they enjoy, and the faculty want to bring them back for the following years. I have heard some things in other districts where that's not always the case. And that, that speaks to, again, what we're doing, you know, as families with kids and as, you know, teachers and leaders. So it is appreciated and I think it's, it's, I'm really happy to hear. You know, we went last year, we want to go again. You know, that, that speaks very well. So thank you for that. And, you know, glad we're able to get this all approved. Thanks, everyone. Thanks for coming. I do appreciate it.
Thanks.
I assume we save well on lunches when the 160 students are out of the.
Yeah, there's. Okay. So thank you and have a good night.
Thanks, guys.
Thanks.
So FY '23, end of year report. Well, thank you, Mr. Chair. So Michael's actually got the next two items here, the end of year report, which, report and the audit letter was included in your packet. And then he'll have a, he has a presentation ready for kindergarten tuition and what the plan is that we put together for phasing out tuition over the next few years.
Okay. So the end of year report is the report that we spoke about this fall. It was submitted at the end of February. I should say, I submitted it at the end of February, excuse me, September, the end of September. The, before we submitted, the town accountant reviews the end of year report, signs off on it, and then the superintendent signs off on it, and the school committee signs off on it, and then we submit it to DESI. In the meantime, the, we have an auditing company that comes in and audits the end of year report this year, which I'm grateful for. I didn't catch it, the town accountant didn't catch it. We had three findings that the auditing company found. We made an addendum to the original submission to DESI. That was done, I want to say about two weeks ago. So I'm going to just review the findings quickly. And Schedule I, that was the revenue that we received from the MSBA, which was the last final audited amount. It was supposed to go into column five, and I just put it into column two. So we made a correction from column two into, back into column five. Again, finding number two was Schedule I. The, the original line item that I was supposed to go into was 2330. I put it into 2325, which was the line right above 2330. So we made that adjustment. And then the third one, similar thing, it was supposed to go into line 2330. I put it into line 2325, which was the line above. And the way the end of year report works is you have to input information by, by category and by school. So, you know, so when you go in, you have to put it in, let's say, go into the high school platform, put it into that line. If you don't save it and you go into the next school, you lose it. So, so there's just little things like that, that the way the program works.
Michael, is this in the, is this in the accounting, our accounting system or is this in the state reporting system?
In the state reporting system. So I take it from ours and put it into yours.
Correct, okay.
So it was just one line off, you know. So, but our auditors caught it. We made the adjustment and we sent it into DESI. DESI accepted them. And then we sent the final report, the auditing report, the next day into the, into DESI. So if you have any questions on that, just let me know and answer them. But there was three findings and it was off by either one column or one line.
Yeah, I think, and I just reviewed it earlier, but each of the findings, it's almost like there was a put and a take.
Yes. So it wasn't that the dollar amount wasn't correct. It was, it was just the line was off.
Okay. Yeah, when I see line numbers like 5,350, I can see why that might. That's not even the highest one.
Does it impact any of our classifications of spending or anything like that?
There's not, there's not reclassification. It's just off by a line.
Right.
You know, there's, I can't even tell you how many lines in the report. But they caught it, which was great. We fixed it and submitted.
That's how we hire auditors.
That's why we are, yes, correct. Any, any questions on that report?
No questions.
I'm gonna just switch.
I don't even want to know. Very well done.
It says it's disabled.
Oh, it's disabled.
Yes, I am.
Yeah, that's a, that's a show. I was referring to that show. While we're waiting, just wanted to let you know that the, that DESI did approve our SOA plan that we presented to you last meeting. So we got the email this week that the plan was accepted. So that's great. As I said in the past, they've kicked them back to districts and told you to do this and accepted ours. So we're happy to see that. We really have the SOI, not the SOA, but we'll, we'll take the SOA.
I'm starting. I saw it.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah. I'll let you share. If it's not letting you share, I mean, it's in the packet. Yeah, just, Michelle, if something changes in it, please interrupt as needed. Yeah, but yeah, otherwise we have it in the packet.
So superintendent asked me to put together a presentation on transitioning, the full day kindergarten for all students. So the transition to the full day kindergarten, so school districts in Massachusetts are required to provide half day kindergarten. And at this time, full day kindergarten is not required in Massachusetts, but it is highly recommended. Out of 200, out of 314 districts, 299 districts provide free full day kindergarten to families. That's 95% of all school districts in Massachusetts provide full day free kindergarten to students. In our area, which is in Norfolk County, Medfield and Millis are the only two districts that still charge for full day kindergarten. All the other districts have free full day kindergarten. So this is a map that demonstrates the, the number of, of the communities and the ones that charge and the ones that don't charge. So to look at this transition, we looked at our revenue stream. We looked at what our balances was that we are carrying forward. And then we looked at our expenses. And we felt pretty comfortable that we could make the transition to full day free kindergarten for all by fiscal year '27. And the way we're going to do that is, so this year, which is fiscal '24, we're currently charging $3,500 per student. And we currently have 160 students that are paying for full day kindergarten, which is about $560,000. In fiscal year '25, we are recommending to reduce the tuition to 2,750. And the number that you see there of 151 students is that as of '04, '05, when we did put this presentation together, there was 151 full day students that have enrolled and that have paid tuition. We do have students that have enrolled, but they haven't yet paid their deposits. So I didn't think it was fair to put those students on this presentation. So we're looking at approximately $473,000 in total revenue for next year. And then in fiscal year '26, we feel like we can decrease the tuition again to 1,500 students, excuse me, $1,500, which is 158 students. And that would be $237,000 in total revenue. And then in fiscal year '27, which would be the year that we feel we can go to full day kindergarten for all students with no tuition. And that's the year that in our enrollment projections, in two different enrollment projections, we're seeing approximately 228 students that will be enrolled in the kindergarten. Just a note that you should, that I put on here, this does not include students on scholarships or reduced rates. And also that the students that are enrolled are students that we currently know about.
Michael?
Yeah.
Okay, so should I wait till the end or?
No, no, go, go.
All right. So, you know, on that projection, you know, knowing we have a teaching negotiation starting up as well.
Mm-hmm.
Well, first off, let me just start by saying, I was a little shocked that we were one of the last to, you know, to go through that. I really was shocked by that. I didn't realize that there had been an acceleration across the state to do that. I know it had been a push. I just didn't realize how much it accelerated. And I'm a little embarrassed, I'll be honest. I'm a smidgen embarrassed by it. The second, what is the percentage of the, our students who are half, doing half day K, the free half day K?
No one in half day K this year.
Correct.
No one? No one?
Yeah. And that's because we had, um, we provided scholarships for, for families that, that, um, needed that to move out of half day into full day.
Yep.
So that's how we do it.
Okay.
But everyone's in a full day classroom this year.
Yeah, and I guess my only thing is if, if there's a, a method, I mean, I know those are, those are large, no, those are F T Es to swallow, you know, in those numbers. Um, in the two twenty projected, uh, how much of our fu- how much of our state funding gets offsets that impact, I guess?
Michael has a slide.
Yeah, I have a slide.
Coming up.
Oh, sorry.
Yeah, so it's gonna.
Like I said, tell me to be quiet.
No, 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 no.
That's a great question.
Those are great questions, so.
We'll see exactly where it gets.
Okay, sorry.
So, um, the, the next slide, um, is our expenses. So we looked at, uh, this year's expenses and we're projecting again, we're projecting that our beginning balance, which we know is, uh, this year was five hundred and seven thousand, three thirty-four. Uh, our prepaid, uh, receipts, forty-one thousand, five twenty-five. So the way you have to look at, the, the prepaid receipts for twenty-four are actually twenty-five students, that's why they're ended twenty-four. Um, so when you look at the spreadsheet, if you look at the prepaid for twenty-four, which are twenty-five stu- which are fiscal year twenty-five students, which is forty-one thousand, five twenty-five, plus the receipts that we're going to project in twenty-five, the three seventy-three, seven twenty-five, that will equal that number that you saw pre- in the previous spreadsheet. The receipts for this year, um, for, uh, students were, uh, four hundred and eighty-six thousand, nine forty-nine, plus the prepaid, which about, I believe was sixty-one thousand, um, uh, of, uh, the total. Uh, our payroll is, for, for the most part, what we'd like to spend out of this revolving account is, uh, payroll. Um, so, uh, this year's payroll is projected at four hundred and sixty-six thousand, nine thirty-three. We did have a couple, expenses of fifteen thousand in there for non-payroll. Uh, so we would be carrying forward to fiscal year twenty-five, five hundred and fifty-three thousand, eight seventy-five. These are our projections as best as we can do. Um, so if we carried forward five fifty-three, uh, eight seventy-five, we take in the prepaid receipts for fiscal year twenty-six, which were twenty-two thousand, six fifty. And we take in the receipts that we will receive hopefully in twenty twenty-five, which would be three seventy-three, seven twenty-five. Payroll, uh, deductions for that year would be, uh, projected at four eighty-eight, seven seventy-nine. And as you can see, our balance is now gonna start decreasing, so now we're gonna be carrying over four sixty-one, four seventy-two into fiscal year twenty-six. Um, we will not be having any prepaid receipts in twenty-six, cause we're not, we wouldn't be charging students in twenty-seven, uh, for, uh, fees. So we would be receiving two hundred and fourteen thousand, three fifty in, uh, tuitions. And that payroll that year, uh, we're projecting two hundred and ninety-nine thousand, three thirty-nine, and I'm gonna show you why that is reduced. We're gonna be having an ending balance of three seventy-six, four eighty-two that we carry over to twenty-seven. Um, there will be no receipts in twenty-seven, we would have, uh, a total, uh, uh, payroll for that year of a hundred and seventy thousand, forty-one, bringing forward a, um, balance of two oh si- two hundred and six thousand. Again, then we would have payroll for a hundred and seventy-nine thousand, we were bringing over, uh, twenty-six thousand, nine ninety-five, and then we would be using that in, uh, twenty twenty-nine. And then we would close out, uh, the revolving account for kindergarten. So I just wanna, the next slide will show you how we're using, um, uh, the, 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 uh, excuse me, the, um, tuitions. Uh, so in payroll for fiscal year, um, that I go by, what, that's, for fiscal year twenty-four, like I said, was, it's four hundred and sixty-six thousand, nine thirty-three, that's our projection for this year. That's four teachers and six T A's. In fiscal year twenty-five, next year, um, our projection, uh, would be four hundred and eighty-eight thousand, seven seventy-nine in salaries. Again, four teachers and six T, the T A's. In fiscal year twenty-six, um, our salaries would go down to two ninety-nine, three thirty-nine. So we're removing two teachers out of the revolving account and then adding them to the operational count. So what we're trying to do is transition these salaries out of the revolving account into the operation, but not taking the hit all in one year. And we can do that because we have reserves in our revolving account. So in fiscal year twenty-six, budget that we will be putting together next year, you will see two teachers that are being moved out of the revolving account and into the operational count. In fiscal year twenty-seven, you're going to see a salary in the revolving account of a hundred and seventy thousand, forty-one. We will be removing two more teachers that year and putting them into fiscal year twenty-seven. Um, again, trying to, uh, decrease the, the revolving account, but at the same time not taking a hit on the, uh, operational side, because we are going to be going into negotiations for our, uh, bargaining units. And then in fiscal year twenty, so in, in that year for twenty-seven, now recall, we are not gonna be charging any tuition, but we still will have expenses coming out of the revolving account. In fiscal twenty-eight, uh, we will be projected again of another hundred and seventy-nine thousand, bringing down that, um, balance, and that's another six T A's. Um, and then it won't be until fiscal year twenty-nine that we will be moving five T A's into our operational. Um, and, but we would have about twenty-six thousand, about twenty-seven thousand that we would be able to pay for one more T A. We would close out the revolving account. And it's, it's a plan where we're going to increase operational cost, um, by about, you know, a hundred and seventy, a hundred and seventy-five thousand per year, uh, for the next few years. What we do have to, uh, uh, and I just wanted to put this, uh, next slide in, because chapter seventy, we're going to see chapter seventy in fiscal year twenty-eight increase. And the reason why, and I'm gonna explain it in a second, is where our current kindergarten students are only being counted at point five for, uh, revenue that we receive from the state. Once we transition to full day kindergarten with, uh, for all, that am I, we're now gonna be able to count the students as a full-time one. Um, and we're gonna be receiving, um, additional, um, funding from, uh, chapter seventy. So what is chapter seventy? Chapter seventy is the state funds earmarked for education. Currently, when the state is calculating that chapter seventy funds, they count our kindergarten students as point five students, starting in fiscal year twenty-eight. If we transition to a full day, no fee, we would see an increase of, in chapter seventy, as our K students would be counted as one point oh. So the example that I gave you here is in fiscal year twenty-four, if, uh, you have a hundred and seventy-one students, the state would divide that in half and we would get funding for eighty-five students. So the current per student aid for chapter seventy is two thousand, seven hundred and forty-one. If you multiply that by eighty-five, you receive two hundred and thirty-two thousand, nine eighty-five in chapter seventy funding for kindergarten students. If we, or had full day kindergarten, the calculations would be different, we would be, uh, you know, um, we would be, uh, counting all of our students. So it would be a hundred and seventy-one students, you multiply that by two thousand, seven hundred and forty-one dollars and you would, we would be receiving four hundred and sixty-eight thousand, seven eleven, which is a difference of two hundred and thirty-five thousand, seven twenty-six. So in fiscal year twenty-eight, we should see an increase of around two hundred, it, most likely we will be more, because the aid per student will be increasing. Um, and that will be a nice transition, um, in that fiscal year twenty-eight as we're moving forward.
How quickly do we get chapter seventy funds?
So chapter seventy funds come in every quarter yearly.
So they go to, they go to the town, they don't go to us?
Yeah.
So, um, circuit breaker goes directly to us, chapter seventy goes to town and they're earmarked for education, you don't have to spend on education, but I mean, obviously Medfield does. Uh, but I think, you know, looking at the, the way that the warrant committee and the town has divided state revenue this year, which was seventy-five percent to schools, twenty-five percent to the town, I think that's a really good, um, option for us to get additional state funding for a budget. Problem is, you don't know the budget until after town meeting, so it's, it's not great timing, cause our town meeting is so early, but in the state is so late. But earmarked for us.
So looking at this, this is a conservative approach to phasing this down?
Correct, it's, it's, we're trying to phase it down. So your, your, your F T Es are full-time equivalent, right?
Yep.
We're not, we're not increasing it, we're shifting them.
Correct, yeah.
But as you're shifting them, the cost goes on to the taxpayers, right?
Sure.
So we're trying to, you know, uh, uh, li- uh, limit the number of F T Es that we transfer into our operational, and that's why we're trying to do it in, in a phase process.
So I guess the, the question I have, so if we were to rip the Band-Aid off next year and say, we are one hundred percent full-time, you know, free full day K, that point five would go to one point oh next year.
Mm-hmm.
Um, and then the revolving funds could offset that still, perhaps, and increase the funding sooner, is that?
So it, so if, if you, if you look at that, I mean.
I know there's a method to your madness.
No, no, that's, that's, no, no. So, w- we're saying that fiscal year twenty-five would be four hundred and eighty-eight thousand, right, would be? So if you look at our revolving account, we have, you know, uh, we'll be carrying on five fifty-three. So basically, you would almost eat up your entire, um, your entire revenue, uh, in your revolving account, that then the impact for fiscal year twenty-six would be a half a million dollars, you see what I'm saying? What we're trying to do is say, okay, that's a lot, you know, for taxpayers, so how do we take that and break it down into a, a three-year span, where we are increasing, you know, the operation, but not at a, you know, ripping off the Band-Aid and having a half a million dollars.
Right, I get it, and I, you know, and the, there's no guarantee from the funds coming into the town unless we had a sort of agreement, but that gets muddied with, aren't, the way the budget process works. So, uh, I was just hoping to accelerate that. You know my mind's going on this.
Absolutely.
Yeah, so, no, but I, I think it's, um, I, I, yeah, let me ponder it a little bit, I think I have another question, sorry, Mr. Chair.
No, I just have, um, I think I'm following the math, the theory, if I just use, go back to the, um, sure, with the spreadsheet. The payroll of, or was the conversation of F Y twenty-five of four?
Four eighty-eight, seven seventy-nine, yep.
Once we're, you know, fully, you know, getting, you know, getting the chapter seventy, so at that point, it would be either, and I'm not sure whether it's F Y twenty-eight or twenty-nine, we would still be picking, that's when our operating, um, expenses would be going up by roughly two thirty.
So, so, so the way, yeah, and so, so if you look at it, so we would be receiving, let's, uh, um, again, an assumption, two hundred and thirty-eight thousand, you still have two hundred and six thousand sitting in your revolving account that you're gonna use, right?
Yeah, yeah, I'm saying, once we've extinguished that revolving account, at that point, we, we do have to pick up the gap.
Correct.
Right.
Yeah, that, next year, we have to pick up the two oh six or whatever, minus the twenty-six, twenty-seven thousand, whatever the ones, he's putting in one seventy.
You're picking up the gap, Tim, but you're getting additional chapter seventy money to offset that. It's not gonna be a wash, but it's additional chapter seventy money in F Y twenty-eight. Correct, the, the way I'm seeing it is, for the next few years, um, the, you know, as, as we reduce the, the tuition, it's coming out of the revolving fund.
It will be a bite each year.
Right, so that operating, right, like we're, we're not.
But it's gonna impact things like, uh, uh, if there's other requests for F T Es in other parts of the district, right?
Correct, correct, that, that's what I see, so, and that's where I'm using the, the simple math, like even using your model.
In theory, at a time.
At a certain point, just one second, it would be the four eighty-eight less the, um, two, two thirty-five, seven twenty-six. That, that's the gap, once extinguished, that, that, that we would, we would have to, in order to retain, e- either we reduce our F T Es across the district, order to do. But it, the, the, that, to me, says by staging it, it at least it gives you a little more time, right?
Correct.
To do that, if, if, if we ripped off the Band-Aid, I think you're saying, we'd have to figure that out more quickly. And it would be more on the taxpayers', right, we would have more.
Upfront, yeah.
Um, I'm really thankful that we're doing this, I'm a big supporter of us moving towards, uh, kindergarten for all, so I just wanna thank you guys for putting this together and putting this in motion. Um, I also get a lot of questions, probably because I have a kindergartner on, you know, up until, went, and actually my second was in first grade when I got this position. So I feel like people are talking about kindergarten a lot. Um, the thing I'm curious about, I guess, is that, uh, the projection right now for the F Y twenty-seven class is at two twenty-eight, right?
Correct.
And the class before that is at one fifty-eight, so that's a jump of about seventy kids, maybe roughly like three classrooms. I recognize this is gonna be a bigger discussion, but I'm just curious, I guess, if we're looking at additional costs that might come with that many children, if we might wanna consider pushing it off for one more year and having that amount of families. So like, I, I don't know what kind of additional costs are gonna be, but they're gonna be a lot.
We're gonna have to add teachers.
Right, at least three, I think, plus.
Plus the aides.
Plus aides.
Yeah, and, and it all depends on, uh, you know, cause Jeff and I have seen this in the past, where you, you're projecting this high number of students and then parents decide to, you know, not send a kid to kindergarten, and then you're looking at, you know, the class behind its numbers are gonna be moving up.
So we have eleven next year and then aren't sending their kids already.
Correct.
Okay.
So, so if you look at two twenty-eight, you take that percentage, there's gonna be a percentage of that.
That goes below the next class, yeah.
So, so we try to balance that out as we're projecting out.
Yeah. Cause I think that's what happened with the second grade class, cause we got questions about the second grade class, because again, my third grader, or, well, what the third grader, third grader, either way, that was our, that, those kids started kindergarten during COVID, right, like, we sent those kids during COVID, so I know a lot of people hope for that reason, and that's why that second grade class is bigger. Um, well, given that this is, I mean, when we're looking at the F Y twenty-seven, I, I recognize this is like a proposal right now, I just feel like that's something that we all need to be mindful of, that, that is potentially, uh.
I, I mean, we can give you another scenario, if you, if you're saying, you know, you wanna push it back a year, I, I think, you know, my recommendation would be then you would do two years of twenty, you know, two thousand, seven hundred and fifty, and then one year of fifteen hundred, just because, again, I, I have to, you know, do the math behind it, but I just think that you wanna give taxpayers enough time to, you know.
Which is like, how much are our operational costs and the jump bringing in that amount of kids that year?
Where, where are we gonna put, where are we gonna put them?
Well, we're gonna have to, the problem is, and we, we've talked about this, is that it's a one-year, it's a two-year problem for all three elementary schools, right? So you, you can't say we're gonna add mod goes to one, cause then you have to add them to all three, right, so it's a.
Get the ones on wheels.
Yeah. So we'll have to take over spaces that aren't currently classrooms for a couple of years and buildings and, um, or aren't currently generalized classrooms and buildings. And we'll have to do something to that effect, because tho- when those kids come in, we wanna keep class size at a reasonable amount. Uh, and I think that's gonna be, you know, two years at Memorial, two years at We洛克, and then two years at Dale, so. We're less worried about Memorial and We洛克 in terms of space, what we're very worried about when it gets to Dale, uh, that's gonna be a problem, so. So I guess some time to figure that out, but hopefully.
Just think something, I, I guess I'd be interested in, and I don't expect you have the operational numbers right now, but like, how much expenditure are we gonna be going up if we're adding potentially seventy kids to the schools, even for that one grade that year, right?
So we, we can do another scenario for you.
Yeah, definitely, absolutely.
And you know, and, because, you know, I, if, if we're looking at the time of twenty twenty-seven, you know, I wanna look at the teacher's contract, I wanna be, just look at the, where, you know, the, the average teacher is and, and they give you a better number, um, you know, and like you said, you know, it could be maybe two classrooms instead of three classrooms, because we have kids that.
We could do actual teacher numbers too.
That's what I'm saying, yeah.
Their, what their salary could be at that point.
Yeah.
Well, you took that into consideration, I see your, your T A jump by a number based on that.
And it jumps because according to, we know we're going into, you know, contract negotiation, so.
Yeah, but, I mean, it would model out, it, it, it will jump.
Yeah.
You would be, it would be offset by the chapter seventy, but that wouldn't, you wouldn't see that the following year. So, yeah, so one year, that's difficult, and the following year, easy.
Right.
Yeah, I guess that's why I was, I was wondering if there's any benefit to declaring it full day and leaning on the, leaning on the reserve that we have sooner to start that other. But again, like you said, it gets diluted on the way in.
Well, let's, let's model it out, let's, you know, like F Y twenty-six, just pulling the Band-Aid and, and doing that, we'll do that.
But.
Yeah, let's, we'll, we'll bring it back in May, we'll figure that out.
Can we layer that over to like what our overall projection of, you know, of enrollment? Yeah, are we, are we able to free up F T Es from other areas of the budget in the higher grades during that time? I'm, I'm, I'm not sure.
Yeah, we'll, we'll be able to look at that and see, you know, obviously, you know, licensure and all that would be difficult, we'd have to figure that out, but.
Yeah.
Yeah, let us play around that again.
Yeah, I mean.
Yeah, we, we are.
It's great forecasting, though, I have to, thank you, yeah, that's awesome.
This is great, so again, I feel you hear about this a lot, so it's nice to be all actually stop saying soon and say like, did you see the presentation at the school committee meeting the other night?
So, so we will, uh, we'll give you another projection where either delay in it by a year, um, and then.
So let's do, let's do one with delaying it by a year, let's do one where we instituted an F Y twenty-six and another one with F Y twenty-seven. just to see what the impact is, let's do that one.
Yeah, when I was wondering, yeah, I was, the concept of delaying by a year, I was thinking, we're at least kicking this off FY25. Right, like, are you saying, when you say delay by a year, I was thinking more.
I, I think.
Extend the whole, yeah, make it, make it extended years.
Because this is already built in FY25.
Yeah, correct, correct, like, the, the tuition next year is 20.
That's already the number you're charging.
That's the number we're charging.
We could do two years of that, right? I think, yeah, I'd like to see both, but like Leo, I feel like full-day kindergarten is important, but I like the fact that even this year, we don't have any half-day classes. So as long as we have the funds to like make up that divide for people who maybe are opting out of full-day kindergarten because they couldn't afford it, and as long as we can make sure that, like, we have the funds to pay for those kids and we basically still are sending everyone to full-day kindergarten. Because I feel like whether, right, the town, parents pay or the town pays, I think just the benefits of making sure kids are going to full-day kindergarten, sort of, the science shows it's helpful, yeah.
Yeah, that's.
Well, it pays us back.
And it pays us back, yes.
It pays us back over time, I guess.
Over time, yes.
That is the part that, you know, the support's established for, you know, reading and mathematics, that we're not providing interventions for eight years later on.
Yes, exactly.
So, I mean, there's, yeah.
And we can, and like I said, for that 228 projection, we'll take the percentage of kids that parents have held back in the last three years, and then put that into that calculation. Just so you guys have an, an idea, you know, what, what that will look like.
And then on that, that second May agenda, because we know we have the one quartile meeting, let's put on there an article, I mean, a, an agenda item that has you revoting the tuition rate. You know, we talked about it during the budget, but you never really efficiently voted that tuition rate, so let's just make sure we do that.
This current, this coming years?
Yeah, the 27.
Do you want to vote tonight?
Well, it's not on the agenda, so I don't need to do that, but we don't need to have it until start of school. I mean, we, we put it out there, that's what it was projected being, so let's just do that to make sure. It will, yeah.
Yeah.
Any other questions? Thank you.
Thank you, Michael.
Thanks, Michael.
Thank you, Michael.
Okay, so next, actually, I'm excited to hear about this, District Communication update. Thank you, Mr. Chair. So as you know, Chris Moran has been doing a, an audit and, and a review of our communication. As you know, Chris is, you, many of you have seen Chris at MASC. He's done some work for us for most, in the past, I mean, just outstanding. He used to be the head PR person for Boston, City of Boston, and then did some work in the public schools there as well. So he has met with parents, he's met with teachers, he's met with the leadership team, met with school committee members, et cetera. And he's putting together all the information, kind of going through the data. And he met with leadership again this week to kind of talk a little bit about what some of the themes are, and what some of the findings are, and, and things that he would recommend in the short term. And then he's going to put it all together, synthesize it, and put a report together for you folks. So I think one of the thing that, that he talked a lot about that was a theme is a consistent communication platform within the district. So that, you know, we definitely have email as, as a consistent communication platform, but when you look at individual classrooms, individual schools, there are other apps and other platforms that people are using. Individual teachers are using them to communicate with parents. And I think we've heard from parents where if you have three elementary kids, you may have three different platforms that you're communicating with a teacher on. So try to really standardize that district-wide and get a consistent communication platform with something that we talked a lot about the other day. He has some really good recommendations on the website that we can do in terms of making sure that it's not just letters that go out by the superintendent or by the principal. It's really putting great information out there that tells the story of the district and doing more of that. So that was something that he talked to us about. And then he talked about a, a regular cadence of communication from central office, so that's not just operational stuff that I'm sending out, but if we could look at the central office as a whole and do something like a blog or a newsletter on a regular cadence that all of us participate in central office and get that out, so that, you know, parents and community members are hearing us, hearing from us about what's going on in the district, linking the strategic plan to that, and not just, you know, the operational things that we, we tend to send out a lot of. So that was some really good feedback. Looking forward to, you know, when he finishes this up and then puts that together for, for you folks. And we've already, we've already met to look at a central office newsletter that we're going to do, where, you know, I have a section, Michael has a section, Christine has a section, Mary has a section. So we get that at the end of the month, each month, to the community and to families, and just kind of tell the story of what we're doing, strategic plan, and what's going on in the district, as opposed to just focusing primarily on operation. So good, more to come, and, you know, definitely the website recommendations. Owen has been working with APTG, and they're going to, they put together some mockups for us in the next few weeks that we can look at, maybe doing some changes there to make it more user-friendly and easier for people to find things. Maybe we do a good job with the buttons, but we can step that up a little bit and make it a little better, so. So far, so good with that, and by the end of May, the next meeting, I'll have a report for you on that.
Is that, is any of it, so, I think you touched on like, so, you touched on a lot of things right there. But is any of this consulting, is it coaching administrators how to write a digestible email?
So that was an interesting conversation.
And so, so it could be consistent among the principals, because you talked about, but like, but like, so it's like, this is, if they have a weekly cadence, like our principals that we get them from, but like, how do you write that email? So it's like, in a way where I can expect to know where to get important things.
Right. So we did talk about that yesterday and kind of a component, Tuesday, kind of the components of that, and what, you know, we think are important. The one thing that we're looking at doing that he recommended with that is a landing spot where, or just something where everyone sends their, their weekly newsletter to central office, and then we send it out to central office, so that parents get all five on the same day at the same time. They can look at it on one email, and if they want to read about WeLok, they can. If they want to read the high school, they can, instead of getting five separate emails. They're trying to bring it one email from central, and then have a landing spot on the website where at any time you can go on there and click, and you can read the newsletter from any school at any time on one place, as opposed to on five different parts of the website. So, like, that's some of the things that we talked about on Tuesday.
And I imagine them coming together, excuse me, you guys, you all will work together, so it'll be like, you know, they won't be, they kind of would look the same.
Right. Right, and that's the thing, that we want to get the template so that there's, you know, there's certain parts that every newsletter has in it, so that everyone knows what it looks like. And there's other parts that some people add things to it, or put a link to that on there, which is, you know, makes it shorter for people to read. You know, there's the key points, and if you want to read more, here's a link, and you can read that as well, so. He was really good with that.
Yeah, this is very difficult, and the metrics along the way, the district admin has engaged in this since last year.
Yeah.
And we're doing some similar strategies. I will, I will share some of the wins and not wins with the ops, the offline.
That'd be great.
And it is difficult to, you know, because even with all the effort, you, you're still getting, the district admin is a similar size, and we only get a total of 300 people opening that one, you know, newsletter that goes onto the whole district.
Right.
And there's a metrics on the tool that we're using. So I think the metrics on finding what is working, and I appreciate the work, because it is hard to try. There's a lot of good information out there, but it's getting the stuff that's at the top, so you don't have to scroll. People won't scroll, right? And that's the, and if you want, and if they're checking it on this, it's even less space, because they're on the portable device, and they're not seeing.
And we know most people are reading on their phones, so we have to be cognizant of that when we write, and make sure it's friendly to the phone, and not something that people are going to be going like this.
I will say there's been adjustments already made, noticeable adjustments on some of the communications out there to make sure that if you want to read more, you can, but it's.
But here's the important stuff you need to know.
Yeah. So, and I appreciate that, it is hard, and so thank you, Dr. Ryan.
I just had, one, any feedback from the staff? Like, my, if I were running one of the schools, I might say, hey, we like the uniqueness of what we do, as opposed to standardizing, you know, in a, in a format. But, and did you get any kind of that?
No, not really.
Yeah.
I think people like, and it's different, because then the teachers get emails from the, from their principals every week too. So on top of the one that parents get, principals will send one to the teacher. Sometimes it's Sunday morning, sometimes it's Monday morning, but they'll get kind of a weekend review of a week, of what's happening this week update. So they see a lot of that too, you know, which, you know, parents wouldn't normally see, so.
Okay, and the only other thing, any, so far, is there additional resources needed when you talk about a communication platform in the school?
The platforms that we're looking at actually could potentially save us money, because we, we get rid of other platforms. So we're looking at ones that, that one or two platforms that do a lot for us, and we have multiple vendors that do that now. So I think in, in the end, it could save us, could save us money. We'll be fairly neutral. But I don't, at this point, I don't think we need any additional revenue for that, any additional funding for that.
And did they, also, I didn't, I just took notes, did they talk about social?
Oh, yes, well, we talked a lot about that. So his recommendation is that we start going, using more Instagram as a district. And now that we have the rekindling of Facebook, it seems that people, more people are on Facebook. It kind of died down for a bit, but it's definitely come back. I mean, even the younger people are on it more, is to look at doing a Facebook site as well. So similar to what Michelle does for the committee, to be on all three platforms. And, you know, most of us, teachers, administrators are on Twitter for the most part, or X, whatever the college is, but. So maybe expand that, so that you can get more coverage in it on Instagram and then on Facebook as well. And have a presence on there, so that, interesting, he says, you always want to keep the comments on on Facebook. You don't have to respond to them, but keep them on, because in his view, taking comments off on a site like that could be, you know, viewed as you don't want to have two-way communication, or you don't care what people think. So he did that in Boston, he always had it on, even though people didn't answer. It just gave people opportunity to write what they wanted to write on that, so. That's what we're looking into that as well, making sure that we can have more exposure on platforms. And, you know, the question was, so if we go on those three platforms, what happens when something else comes up, right? Like the BeReal that comes up, you know, that'd be kind of interesting, we did BeReal. You know, but that would actually really be interesting. But if we did something like that, you know, you're going to have to be adapting and shifting, right? So you are, it might be Facebook and Instagram and X now, but you, something else might come up in two years. You got to adapt to that and shift, and people are moving to that, so. Just more of getting beyond just using X as our, as our main place, so.
Yeah, there's definitely an exodus of X.
Yeah, definitely.
Yeah, I think, you know, and the platforms that you're probably looking at all have a methodology of posting to those.
They do, at the same time.
Yeah, at the same time. So the message is coherent.
Yep, same, you just hit one button and it goes all.
Right, it's the same on every channel.
Well, that, that looks good.
Okay.
And the good news.
Good to see that progressing.
Yeah, for sure.
So substitute pay rate.
Yeah, so, this is an interesting one. So we've talked to the teachers about it, and, and certainly, we've, we've talked about it at central office, and the principals have talked to us numerous times about this. And then we actually had a couple of substitute teachers reach out to us as well. So we are, as you can see, woefully underpaying our substitute teachers. Medfield's rate right now is $95 a day. And I did a quick survey of my colleagues in the area, to which two of them called me cheapo, when they saw I was $95. But Canton is at 125, DS is at 125, Franklin at 118, Holliston 115, Hoppington 140, Medway 110, Millis at 110, Newton 130, Walpole 115, and Westwood 123. So one of the things that I want to talk a little bit about is that when we don't get substitute teacher, what does that look like in certain schools? So if we're down substitute teachers at the elementary level, you know, we have to pull assistants sometimes. If you have an assistant working kindergarten, if it's not a kindergarten classroom and we have no sub, that person might be pulled in, in teaching first grade. You know, if we look at the upper grades, if we can't find a substitute teacher for middle school or high school, sometimes that period is spent in the library for kids or in the cafeteria. Again, this is not a Medfield issue, this is a state of Massachusetts issue right now, it's happening everywhere. We want to try to minimize that, and we want to make sure that we are in a, in a place where, you know, we're competitive and we can get substitute teachers. We have situations where someone is scheduled to sub on a particular day. One of the districts I just read to you calls them or notifies them, and they can make $45 more in Hoppington. They're going to go to Hoppington that day. So that leaves us kind of in a, in a bind when it's the morning of or the day before, so.
How are, reserved, or do we have enough? I know it's an issue of just having them available, as, what does that then like this year?
Well, it ebbs and flows, right? So at the beginning of the year, we have folks, and then when the college kids come back in December, January, we are, we have, we're flush with substitutes at that point. And then when they go back, we have our original group from September that come in. But if they have other options, many subs will go in many towns, right? And they have other options that need to make more money, of course, they're going to do that. And then now the, the college kids are starting to come back in May, we, we tend to have those, you know, those kids come in for May and June, so. You know, we do, we're doing professional development with the elementary teachers every Friday the entire year with our Altai consultant with reading. So every single Friday, we take substitute teachers that go into the elementary schools. So if someone is sick in those buildings, sometimes that causes a problem on Fridays, or if someone has a personal day or something like that. So, you know, attendance across the board, I think, is for, not only for kids, but for everyone, is, is something since COVID that has been a problem with. If a teacher got COVID up until recently, they had to miss five days of school, so that's a problem, you know. So all of those things add up to the fact that we really need to raise our, our substitute rate. And I'm asking that you raise it to 120, which is the average of the communities around here. It gets us above some of the districts around us, but certainly not as high as, as a, a Westwood or a Hoppington. But I think it will, it'll get us in the, you know, in the range that we need.
Yeah, would we consider just going to 125?
Why can't we be the same as Dover Sherburne?
We could, oh, we could, absolutely, I was just going for the average.
And then we're a little bit more than Westwood, so I feel like, right, I can see what we're doing.
Happy to go there.
Yeah, we have a Chipotle in town.
Yeah, I'm happy to do 125, we're just trying to look at the average.
Yeah, I mean, I, I would, I would think we should just, for the extra $5, to then be able to have people maybe pick up a phone for us versus Westwood or Dover Sherburne.
I would say too, we've had, I don't know, for two years or just this year, but the building sub request continues to come.
It does.
Which I think also signifies the challenge that, yes, the schools are all facing with subs as a whole. So I think putting ourselves in a place to be more competitive makes a ton of sense.
Having school, multi-school-based subs is something I would support in the future as well, and because that, that person's experienced and can also help manage substitutes.
Right, yeah, for sure. Yeah, I think that's a good idea. I mean, I think 125 is, is perfect. You want to go there, I was just trying to hit the average, so we're happy to have 125. I think, and just so you know, so long-term substitutes that are, you know, beyond maternity leaves or beyond, you know, two to three weeks, we pay them, if they have a master's degree, master step one. If they're bachelors, bachelor step one, so they're exempt from this. This is just the day-to-day substitute teacher.
Do you want to make the motion?
Your motion.
Yeah, go ahead, go ahead.
Yeah, no, just, before we make the motion, one, I think so, 125 would be the figure. Two, if it's a vote, I'd just see if there is any public input on this topic.
I understand the question, it's broken us to Mike.
Oh, yes, we, we've had the conversation. Not 125, we had, we had the conversation for 120, not 125, so we'll figure it out.
In my, in my retired life, I'm going to be a substitute teacher, but only for the little kids. Because they're my favorite.
In Hoppington.
No kidding.
Okay, no public input, so Leo, you started to say something earlier.
Well, so I guess I would say a motion to increase the substitute rate to 125.
Current.
Current.
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Hi.
Bye. Great, thank you, that's great news.
Next up is Summer Workshop, and I'll talk logistics first, and then we'll talk about topics at a, at a high level. We'd like to do is, currently, we have two meetings on the agenda in June. And what we've tried to do in the past, and we'll try again, we'd like to try to have one meeting that's tip, you know, more typical like this, and convert one of them to a workshop. And we try to run that, if you remember the dates. Just for them, it's right on our website, for the June meeting. Just for them, it's right on our website. For the June meeting?
The June meeting was the sixth and the twentieth.
Yeah, let's open this one up. So, we would be looking to do potentially the workshop on June twentieth. Be a little easier than trying to manage everyone's schedule in July. Then that, that's assuming that, that's, you, you will see a couple of meetings. This is a pretty heavy agenda today. I think that's just the nature of what we deal with at the end of the year. So, so that was number one. And then the second topic, and I may have to pull up a picture. Michelle and I was talking about, it's like, nice to say, yeah, let's have a summer workshop. What are we gonna talk about? I thought it worked out pretty well last year where we went in, a little more open-ended discussion, kind of key themes. I took a lot of, I know I sincerely did take a lot of effort to try to listen to feedback and hear, you know, informally, what are the priorities for the year? You know, it allows us to talk in more detail on, on certain topics. But we, that, that wound up being very helpful as then we kind of moved into school committee goals for the year and what would our priorities be. So, I'm gonna pull this up for one second. I tried to get it over here. But so, Michelle and I met yesterday. Just talk a little bit about agenda and we also talked about how you have school committee goals, superintendent goals, and then in some cases, you're gonna have specific goals for the, we, we have the strategic plan, but your yearly goals. But theoretically, they should be, and we're trying to ladder them up where appropriate. There's some things the school committee will do, for example, this year on policy, that may not be as much as important for the, you know, the district and the administration. So, what I thought we would do though is, was high level to talk about how did we do against the goals that we set up in October or November would be topic A. Topic B would be, you know, what do we want to focus on for next year? And I also, Dr. Morrison, you weren't there, we also think it would be a good time to kind of hear input from you as well. How did we do against your goals? What are you thinking about? Right? Cause that, one may influence the other. And I, I, after talking it through, I think it's appropriate to have that meeting at the same time. You could say, hey, the school committee says our goals are X. And then Dr. Morrison says, okay, ladder up. But I, I don't think it, you know, that, that's nice in theory. To me, it shouldn't work that way. There should be good, open-ended, public discussion about these topics, which would happen. And, you know, so that, that's how we're thinking about it. We have in years past for Diana and Will, these two. Sometimes we do deeper dives on other topics that is more discussion. It may or may not be a priority. You know, we'd be very much open to that as well. I, I think we probably would do that. So, that's how we're thinking about it. I'm sorry, I was verbose. But I, I thought last year was the, you know, as, as we kind of, the way we put the goals together, it seemed to flow pretty well. And, and, you know, we're, we don't want to overdo it. Like we're, you know, there's so much time talking about it and then quantifying it and then we're giving so many meetings. But we do want to make sure, hey, there's a, a general drumbeat that we have.
I think that's a great idea. I think the, we should probably use the strategic plan as a framework.
Right.
Yeah.
And then the only other recommendation I have is that as we discuss the topics, I think, I think it is Michelle's point that we have more like, kind of like, public stake in the ground, public-focused discussions. And I don't know if it's like a, I don't know how you've gotten that before, but it's always hung in the back of my head.
When did we talk about it? Or when did I say it?
Many meetings ago. I, the deep bear trap there that comes up from time to time. But, you know, as we, but we talked about, you know, setting up expectation, little dates that we talk about, X on this date and Y in this time of year to kind of coincide. And so that, we kind of set up a cadence around that with our agendas. And then I think it was more around, you know, a cadence of our agendas.
Okay.
That have those set, you know, times. And maybe that's something to discuss based around our strategic plan.
Yeah, one, one thing, actually, Michelle had a really good idea where we talked about, not a guide, but, you know, I don't know if you want to bring that up, but.
Yeah, so one of the things we talked about or asked Tim, if we could talk about it at the summer workshop, cause it felt like a good spot for these kind of open-ended discussions, is, I've been involved now in two appointments, right? One for the SBC and one for the school committee. And it feels like every time we end up in this space, we're starting from the very beginning. And I think when you're in that space and that it's happening around you, like, it's hard to make sure you're staying in a very level space.
So, having some sort of guiding doc, not necessarily like you have to do this, you have to do that. Like just a general overarching, like, guideline on if you have to make an appointment, here's some things to think about it, yes. And there are some other committees locally that have that type of document. So, I guess just us having a discussion on doing something like that, putting something together like that. And then what Tim and I were talking is there might be some other places where we could use just, I feel like, like general guidelines on some of these things.
Things like, you know, like roles and responsibilities a little bit. And doing some of the work we did this year.
Yeah.
Michelle and I look at a lot of other districts. Some things we like.
Right.
You know, or I like, or you like, you know, and some things we don't.
Yeah.
But, you know, I think we don't want to be overwhelming and say, hey, let's take this really big thing on. But there should be some areas where we're not reinventing wheels.
Right.
You know, like I would even say the appointments, they were, they were different.
Right.
Circumstances. So, there was reasons why they were a little different. But that, that might be one of the, the theme topics. And, and that is again, like, hey, what typically happens this time of year? So, trying to get that into, you know, closer into one place.
You want to do that onsite this year or are we going onsite or?
I think we talked about, well, I guess I, actually, I'm not gonna share anything because I would like to hear what the committee said. That's, that's what they told me in the school committee chair.
Just to make plans.
I'd rather do it here than have to go to Ashland again.
I don't have an opinion on it. It would be my first time.
I haven't had an opinion either.
Yeah, we, we were thinking, do it here. I mean, do it, do it within the district, may, maybe or may not this room. Something about getting a different look, you know, so maybe not here in the library, but we assume we do.
Right, a different room, yeah.
One of the buildings here. So, that's how we're thinking about it. And I'm open, it was, at least Will, you were here last year, like, you know, if there's topics that you think are really important, you know, bring them up with me. And if necessary, the early June agenda, we can talk as a committee about what, you know, locking up what that agenda would look like. We'd probably do it half, you know, try to keep it half a day, you know, but a pretty full half day is how we.
So, during the day?
Yeah.
Okay.
So, it'd be June, assuming it would be June twentieth. You know, I'd, I'd prefer the morning, like nine to one thirty or something like that.
Great, I'd prefer to just start in the morning.
So, we'll, we'll work, we'll work on that. I think, again, the dates are the same right now. Okay, so, we already talked about the appeal, which is good. Any other items since posting?
No, the chair.
Okay, good. Old business, FY twenty-five budget update.
Nothing new to report. I think we're, I think the warrants ready to be printed and the taxpayers should be getting that soon to their home. And looking forward to town meeting on May sixth.
Questions?
Budget.
I know there's nothing to report.
Budget questions?
Medfield School Building Committee update.
Yep. The SBC met last week. Everything's kind of pushing together. Prior to that though, Mike Meredith, Jeff, Tim, myself, had an opportunity to have a courtesy call with the MSBA. Kind of touch base on just getting a better understanding on potential things we could focus on over the next eight months to try to be productive while, after we submit the SOA and try to put ourselves in a spot to be picked, right? They were very grateful for them to take this call and, and speak with us. They were very measured in their responses and honestly, a lot of it is stuff that you could get on their website. But I will say, one of the things that they kind of focused on was the evidence, they're gonna be looking for evidence of a town being ready to support a school project. So, we talked at our last meeting on additional things that we can be doing from community outreach to make sure that, to get a better pulse on, on the community and, and kind of what we need to be doing in that space. We've started to talk high level about site selection and that's something that the, we'll be having some upcoming forums for the community to be able to come talk to us about that. Trying to see what else. The SOI has been submitted. We'll be distributing a letter at town meeting that kind of goes over the financial implications that came out of the presentation Steve Callahan put together, which is really phenomenal. Very grateful that, again, he took the time to do that. And, yeah, I think that's all I have. Do you have anything?
No, I pretty much wrapped that, okay.
Oh, I know, sorry, one more thing. And then we also need to, as a school committee, discuss grade configuration and we'll need to be voting on that soon. So, we did have a request from the SBC to kind of put that stake in the ground so that would be in that space. So, while the SBC did not specifically recommend a grade configuration, there was a.
Consideration of cost.
A consideration on cost, correct, to keep it four or five. If we look back, and I know, I think Tim and Leo were the only ones on the committee at that time, but the school committee previously during the last roundabout spent a lot of time talking about grade configuration, evaluating three, four, five versus four or five, the benefits of having a three, four, five versus a four or five. And I think there's a lot of evidence that shows the benefits of a three, four, five. But at the end of the day, we need to be thinking about, my opinion, we need to be thinking about what we can do to get the town to support it. And cost is going to continue to be such a big factor that I think when we're evaluating grade configuration, we should be, well, what, while we need to be focusing on what's best for the kids, I think we also need to be thinking about what's best to try to get the project accepted. So, even if we have, you know, some documents that say three, four, five is best, I think we also need to be making sure we're taking more holistic view at what we can be doing to help Dale get fixed permanently.
If we ever, which, this, that all makes complete sense, because we do the configuration of like set, like fourth, fifth, would it be like guaranteeing that four or five would be in the new school? Or is there a scenario where like we could say four or five loses the, be a lock and like, two, three could use the new school to keep like K through three maybe on the same campus? If like, is, if, I don't know what's gonna happen, but say they refinish Dale or they put the new school X to Dale to keep like that closer.
That could be part of the conversation.
So, we're not locked into which grades go potentially.
I would, I would just say that the SOI is written for four or five.
Yeah.
Okay.
So, I think if, if, if that's something that the community want to do in the future, I think that's the conversation. But I think for this SOI, it's written as a four or five.
Okay.
And that, and MSBA is pretty clear about, you know, making it, making it as a standard project based on what your SOI is. So, you know, location and grade configuration, those types of things are, are fairly standard in their minds.
So, I think that will probably be on, again, like our May meeting agenda to vote on grade configuration. I'm happy to try to find the.
Well, I think, you know, my, my, some of that is the education, you know, was the educational plan. I think to a certain degree is overwhelmingly saying, you know, one versus another, the grade configuration. So far, I haven't seen that or, you know, heard that. And the way I think about it, kind of like in line with the word that MSBA used was community readiness. I, I think so far, the process with the SBC, I mean, has been, you know, I, I'm not part of it, but I think it's, it's been a good process. I think the, the team came together without an agenda. You know, other than what I wrote down really is the best school that the town can support, right? And, and I think we need to be thinking about that. For me personally, as I think about a three, four, five versus a four or five, the best school that a town can support. And I think the town's support gets harder as it gets, you know.
More extra.
Yeah, cause the square, square footage goes up. And that, you know, so the, the educational plan better be really, you know, telling you there's a good why behind it. We're not here to vote, you know, and this is just overall updates. That, that's just, you know, what, what I do, do think about it. There could be more studies and, you know, different things we could do across court. We can study it to the cows come home. It's gonna come down to dollars and cents and how many dollars make sense. And that's what it's gonna come down to. So, a two-grade configuration is what this town might deal with a stomach, obviously. That was part of the consideration the last time that we made, scaled it back from a three-grade to a two-grade, particularly under the, the lens of the pandemic. And Anna Maria, Anna Mae was specific, you know, one of the reasons in saying that in that meeting was around the concern for the cost and the possible impact of the economy. So. And again, I fast forward, it's not getting any cheaper. So, and I echo that, I think that it's, would be hubus to provide a, a plan that is cost-effective, you know, and that the community can support. I mean, I, so, so, yeah, I, I agree. I, I think it's good to bring that forward as a, as a, as a whole. Well, if, if the SBC is asking for it, we should provide that.
They have asked, correct.
Yeah, I'm all for that. We can add that as a future agenda topic. And the only other comment, I, I did take some time and they've done a great job. You know, some of the documents that, you know, some of the presentations that, that Warren Committee has done and some of the others. You know, that, that was one of the comments they, the MSBA did say, talked about community readiness. There's need that they know about and then there's community readiness. You know, at least we're putting the different pieces in place that regardless, you know, of where they go, we're continuing to get ourselves more, more ready. Okay, so, I think that, that fits the SBC unless there's anything else on that. Community engagement and communication, I would say, I just think Will and I had a office hours and we did not have people show up or feedback. It was a good opportunity to catch up with Will, if you don't do too often.
I would just say for CPAC stuff, just to put it out there, the parent, the parent groups are going for it. So, parent connection groups, if you, you know, go to CPAC's website, there's dates for all of those. And then the, the one that I, the two things I wanted to shout out was on April twenty-third, there's an executive function meeting in the Blakeville School Library at seven PM. So, any interest in that for your child? Again, remember, you're gonna attend CPAC whether you have a kid on IP or not. And then.
And five or four.
Then five or four, yeah, sorry. And the, the, the first ever Jim James Inclusion Award, they're taking submissions till five-one. So, this award seeks to highlight the employees with our district who promote and model inclusive practices, ensuring that all learners are welcome and celebrated. So, if any parents are out there and had a great experience with someone, you know, go to the CPAC website and you can, there's a link on the website on how to nominate.
I don't know, did you have a really high engagement after the pandemic or not pandemic after the eclipse?
Oh, we did, yes. Our, that, the Boston Globe YouTube short, that was phenomenal. Like.
Really good.
It was really well done.
So, they sent me the new one today, which is the full version of it, which is on our website now.
Okay.
On the front page of our website. So, we couldn't get the short, cause I guess there's an algorithm on our website that doesn't allow YouTube shorts, just YouTube full. I learned more about that than I want to today. And so, it's now up there. I asked the Globe, they sent a new one with a horizontal video that's a full length. So, it's, it's really cool. It's great.
Yeah, it was fun. Like the first time I watched it, my neighbor was one of the kids that was like shouting. So, I like texted her and I was like, and he, the bus stop the next day, he was just glowing. Like he was so excited. He felt like he was legitimately famous. He was like, I was on the news. I was on the news. I was very excited. the bus stop the next day, he was just glowing. Like he was so excited. He felt like he was legitimately famous. He was like, I was on the news. I was on the news. It was very exciting. It was very cute.
No, it's, that was a good, I mean, even the eclipse, it really was a nice overarching community builder.
Yeah.
It was, well, if it's unintended consequence when I was thinking about it, but it was, it was nice. I mean, and just not, not just here across the board. So we had, we had additional glasses that we purchased. It just had extras in. So we, we brought them to the center. So we have the senior center got some town hall and Lisa Fire. We'd have enough for all of them, but we, we gave them a few and then Thomas up in the house as well.
I was just going to say that because actually someone stopped me at the bus stop again.
Yeah. I know it was appreciated.
Yeah. She said, can you tell Dr. Marston, thank you from the senior center?
Yep.
She's like, there was a lot of extra, a lot of glasses for seniors that did.
Yeah. And I think a lot of them had a thought to go. So they put an email out or however they can keep it there.
It was very appreciated.
My, what was going on here? What you, what happened in the high school?
I actually wasn't here. I was in Maryland. She was, she was out there. I was admitted soon stay. So
Congratulations.
Thank you. Thank you. So I was there, but I wasn't as interested as my dad and my friend's mom. We were kind of sitting there, really looked at it and we're like, okay. And then we like, they were really into it. I looked at it and then I was like, okay. But we had to really fight for glasses. Like, well, I didn't, I was handing them, but they were really into it.
I mean, I feel like for the younger kids, they were still in school. Like obviously the middle school and high school was out even before like they recommended like viewing. So I think.
It was cool.
But yeah, I think the kids brought their glasses home. They went and take the bus from the middle school and high school.
And we had some high school students up here, astronomy club and then others. We had a scientist that is a friend of one of our teachers who came, had done a presentation prior, came back from the eclipse. He had a telescope there, which was awesome to look at the eclipse through. And he just gave a presentation and talked to the kids about what was going on. And it was, it was awesome. So it wasn't the entire high school. It was probably, you know, 50 kids, but really good.
I did think the teachers did a good job, at least the right for, that I know for my kids, like talking about the eclipse because the facts, both of my kids knew about like the eclipse and like the science behind it. I think that like that pulled through in the, the classroom.
Yeah.
So it wasn't just like, oh, this is cool to look at in the sky, but they seemed to have like all these like facts about it and which I thought was nice to back up what's happening.
Yeah, there was a lot of facts. Then I heard some urban legends here. I don't know. It's just like people were repeating things. This is the first time in the next hundred years.
Yeah.
No, no.
There's one like next year in Spain, I think.
Yeah, I was going to say, there's a, there's a place you can send the glasses. You don't dispose of them.
We recycle them now. Yeah, we are.
To the next place.
I'm saving them. Twenty years from now, I think it comes over here.
Perfect timing.
Oral Berry is, is doing it for the, for the district. We're sending everything over here to the high school and Oral is collecting them and.
To send them off to the next place. Yeah.
That's a good idea.
Because there are places that don't have the money to, to fund it, put students.
Yeah, I think quite a few school districts.
I don't know if any of you remember the, when we were in, when I was in elementary school, not when we were in elementary school, but we had the shoebox with a pinhole, a white piece of paper where we couldn't look at it. We couldn't look at it. We had to put our backs to the eclipse and look at and watch the shadow in the box. And that was the extent of it. It wasn't exciting. We saw the other day, but the glasses sure beat the shadow box. That's what I say.
I did see some class, like on like the internet, right? Some schools didn't make those shadow boxes. I saw some pictures of kids doing that.
Calendar out because I was, I thought it would be fun to reach to play with it. So
Yeah, it was great. Good experience.
Yeah.
School start times committee.
Yeah. So I'm happy, happy to give an update or. So I thought it might be helpful because I do feel like there's a, a smaller group of people who are at the committee meeting. So just to like reframe, I think every parent who expressed interest to join the committee was invited to join. So we do have that parent set. We have students and we have teachers from all the different schools represented. So for our first meeting, which was on February 12th, and I'm just going to recap because again, I think not everyone was there. So I think to sort of public input, like just to make sure everyone's sort of aware, looks at these notes, they sort of understand what the conversations have been because I'm also getting questions from people. So our first meeting, which was on February 12th, it was really about setting the stage of why we're considering it. So we heard from Dr. Marston, sort of why we want to look into this, the fact that other schools in our area have already made the change and we're actually similar to kindergarten. We may be a little behind what other schools have already done over the, the past few years. And then we also got a presentation and talked to Hannah Gardner more on the science of sleep and why, why we should consider this, just like the pros and the cons, which I thought the takeaway from the science, right? The lack of sleep consequences for this population, which is really going into like 11, 12 year olds to sort of senior, so that like teen years, pre-teen to teen years, lack of sleep, you have impaired cognitive function, there's more motor vehicle accidents, risky behaviors increase, which include like substance abuse problems, emotional disorders around anxiety and depression. Thinking about delayed school start times where we do see this population of students starting school later, whether that's even eight o'clock or eight 30 or nine, doesn't matter, but later than what we're doing right now, you're seeing less sick days, better performance on math and reading, writing tests, overall better grades. And what some people don't realize is that sleep increases because some of the thought is that, well, if you start school an hour later, they go to bed later. But like based on their brain chemistry and hormones, like it's actually, they're still going to get tired between like 10 and 11:30, regardless of what time they get up. That's sort of their, that's how sort of it works, right? You're always going to have the outliers, but the majority of the population of that age, it's like their brain starts to shut off between that. So it's not that they'll end up staying up till 12:30 or one in the morning. It's that they'll actually end up still going to bed at the same time and potentially getting, if we were to move school times, extra 30 minutes or an hour of sleep every day and over time, right? That adds up. And she also explained, which I thought was interesting, was that with sleep, sleep debt accumulates and it's, you can't really make it up on your health over time. Whereas that's very different than if you do unhealthy eating, like you can like diet and exercise, but like the sleep deprivation, like is very hard to make up for some of those health consequences. So, so I thought, I think everyone in the room thought that was really interesting because again, she presented it from like, here's the science that we've tracked.
Sorry, but the other one, because I thought you were going to say it was a, you can't make it up, right? If you go like five hours all week and you sleep 12 hours on the weekend.
Right.
These negative factors still happen.
Exactly. So yes, I thought that was a big point. So it's like, you can't ever catch up. So then if we see this over years and years of this sleep debt. So that was really what we focused on in the first meeting. So I think it was really setting the stage of why we're having this conversation. The second meeting we had was on March 13th. And we started that meeting by breaking up into smaller groups. So everyone on the committee was given sort of what the groups were going to be and you could rank your, you know, one, two, three, what you'd be most interested in. We broke up into small groups. So the different groups were staff considerations, scheduling, communication, family student considerations, transportation, and then extracurricular activities. So what we did, so every group probably had three to five people on it, came up with more of a list of what we should be thinking about, what potential questions, parents, students, community members might have pertaining to each of these, these subjects. And then we did a readout at the end. So it, again, it helped people start to frame the conversation, thinking about what we want to share with the community, how we want to talk about this and what came out of that. Already been being talked about from meeting one, but what came out of that meeting, which I think was most important, was getting the survey out to students and then parents in the district. And then we had our last meeting just yesterday, yesterday, yes, April 10th. So the survey did go out and Will was on the communication group. So he can speak to the survey a little bit as well. But I do know that it was sent to 2,700 email addresses. So every parent in the district received it. So our meeting yesterday, we had like three things to really discuss. First one was Michael came and talked about the busing schedule, how that could potentially work, you know, what would that look like, sort of the cost of busing, all of that, which I think we had had a lot of questions about the busing on the meeting before. So that was helpful. Eric Scott, the athletic director came. So he talked about the after-school schedules for all of our students who play sports and sort of what that would look like if we switched school times to starting later. Also some concerns about the buses and how we would get these students to the different places. Also like field times and the sunsets and all of that. And then our last agenda yesterday was really reviewing the survey results. So what we did is we broke up into two groups. One set of us really focused on the family guardian results of the survey. And then the other group focused on sort of what the students' feedback was. So speaking to the family guardian survey, we were actually really pleased. So out of that 2,700 emails that went out, we've already had a little over 1,300 responses. So we've got almost about 50% of parents weighing in. And what we found was one of the, some of the biggest concerns for us were, were thinking about as like the committee is how many families rely on their older children to watch their younger children after school. So ultimately, right, it works now because middle school and high school get home before your elementary school kids. What came out was that about 90% said they don't, they don't need that. And that isn't a consideration for them, whereas like 10% said right now that they do rely on that. And then the other question we asked was how, if you had your older student home before school to help with getting your younger child to school, like, are we switching it? Like, would that help you? And 79% said no, doesn't matter. But 21% said they'd actually appreciate that, that support in the morning. And then it also asked, the survey asked questions about bedtime, what we thought. I mean, dead time's ranging from eight to 11:30 depending. Any child in the Medfield school systems, parents got this. So we had responses from kids who are in preschool, all the way to seniors. And in the free comment range, so at the end of the survey, it gave people a choice to write whatever they would like. And going through the, the notes, not everyone put a note in, but we'd say in about two thirds were supportive of making a change in terms of having older kids start later. So that's, so that's the initial survey data. And I don't know if you want to speak to any of the student data because I know you guys looked at that a little closer in your group.
The student data, the one thing that was confusing is it wasn't as high as two thirds. There were more students saying that they would not like a change.
Can I just ask one?
Sure.
Did we go to Austin?
It was eighth through 12.
Eighth grade and up.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah. So the, 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 well, so let's see. So it started, that was the biggest thing that jumped out that I think we're all surprised on. In the comments, kids were saying things that they did not necessarily feel they wanted school times to change. I will say personally, as someone who taught in a high school for 12 years, there were also questions on there that said like, how many days a week are you tired? And it was always or two to four. So, so there is something.
Yes.
You know, when you are, I mean, I'll just say this is just me talking, but like when you survey high school students, it doesn't always match up, right? So they don't, we don't, in this community, we know how important extracurriculars are. So a kid could tell me he is tired three to four days a week or all five days. Or, and he or she or they might also say, I don't want things to change because I don't want you to mess with the cross practice. So, so it wasn't as strong with the parents in terms of the like anecdotal support of moving it, but, and I, I think teenagers are teenagers. I guess. So I'll say it without me like babbling on about that. But yeah, the, the, the student data, the bedtime, it was like, the eighth graders were like right around 9:30, like a large chunk of them were between nine and 10. High school was a bigger range with like the median probably being somewhere around that like 11 o'clock time. But yeah, so, so that was just in terms of the data. But I think Diana hit on a lot of the important parts from, from the parents in terms of how the survey was made or created, because I was on that. We tried to be pretty straightforward with yes or no stuff. We came up with our questions and then when the breakout groups all came together, if there were things we missed, we, we added those questions. So after school, you know, what we have, we had Medfield extracurriculars and then other extracurriculars. And we had, you know, work and things like that that mattered. And those were things that frankly, got added that we as the survey group didn't have. But one of the high school students brought it up and, and we learned that. So I, I think the survey did its job. I think we're happy with the questions that were on there.
And what was nice about the survey, I think, was it, we didn't ask like, do you, because we don't know what a change would look like, whether it was more just factual data, like would this help? Like what time does, you know, after school activities? And then it was really the, the free response where people could, could weigh in.
For the student data, did you guys look at just, just eighth, ninth and 10th graders? And was it still 50%? Because of the 12th graders, like you guys, you're leaving, right? And the 11th graders also won't be affected by that.
Give the number.
So I'm just curious if we look at like eight, nine and 10.
I think we had about 542 students respond. It was like almost 550. So the, so we'd have to look at the comment section because again, we didn't ask the question, do you want school to start later?
Okay.
But we can look at, we can break the data down just from ninth through 10th to your point.
Yeah.
And see what that said about.
I'm just curious if like, you know what I mean?
Yes. It's not going to impact certain populations.
Right.
We also found in the parent data, which I understand, right? You could tell by some of the, the comments of parents whose kids are still little, right? Either preschool or kindergarten. You know, they didn't either have comments or they were just like, it works for us now. But it's also hard to envision what your child, right? I think it's hard if your child's in kindergarten to picture what eighth grade looks like.
Yeah.
Because those are such a, a world apart. I do know, so I know Mary and you guys are going to look at some of the survey data a little bit more, I think, and break it down. But in our, we do plan on now figuring out a plan about how we can share this more with the community, have a meeting where people can come and sort of hear some of what I just shared, ask more questions. And we have two more meetings before we plan to come to a recommendation to bring to Dr. Marston and then eventually the school committee.
Do you know if the email address has been getting a lot of inquiries?
I haven't seen that.
Molly, do you have something to say?
Well, it kind of, I get what you're saying. It's not like, I, I see you reaching out to people. And I, I get like significantly, like I'm like, I wake up, I'm not really tired anymore. Like it's like 30 minutes is a big difference. But at the same time, I'm not surprised people are like, well, I don't want to step back this because like the time we wake up is so like annoying because if you are really tired, but the time we get out is really convenient. Like I have an after-school job and like if we, but I guess it won't affect me. So, but if.
But like what time, yeah, right. And that's where I think we asked that question, like what time does your.
And it's like, so like it depends on where you work. But I mean, like for me, like if you work at like Brothers, it wouldn't really affect you that much. But like I work at a daycare. So like that would affect me.
Yes.
But that's not, you can't accommodate everyone. But I will say that like 30 minutes is like, I wake, I usually wake up at 6:30, but I wake up at 7:15.
And like you can feel the difference. Yeah.
Like you can definitely feel it. But I would definitely be the person to be like, I'm tired five, five days a week, but I don't want to do it. I would probably be like, but you can't please everyone. And like.
So, and I think the, the big things for everyone to remember, and I think when I'm talking to people like in town who ask about it, is that we aren't looking to, we wouldn't be looking to implement this for the 24, 25 school year. We really want to, if we did take a vote in June and decide, we're giving people almost 18 months to adjust their schedules in terms of childcare, like how, which I think is a nice sort of runway that people can prepare for the change.
I just had, I have one or two questions. Do you see, like if you look out towards what's next? What, like what's the tone of the meeting? Do you feel like the, the committee, they're, is there, are they apart, you know, different areas?
I don't.
How's it like?
I feel like it's been a lot of discovery so far. And now we'll find out the next meeting, we'll probably have a better answer to that question.
Yeah.
Because, yeah, we're trying to figure out, we broke up in groups to figure out logistical questions. You know, Michael came to explain to us like a bus route is 40 minutes long, right? So we're not even like, we haven't even gotten into like a time, right? Like no one's mentioned like, let's start at 8:15 and set, because now we, now we have all the data, we have, we have the surveys. But Michael and Eric spoke to us about like, like, like what's possible. So now I think in our next meeting, after our next meeting, we'd be able to answer that question. But now we're all just asking a million questions and hopefully talking to our neighbors and trying to, trying to see what the possibilities are and where, now we know kind of where the community or where, you know, half of the community parents are feeling.
And I think everyone, for, for most part, I'd say the majority of the committee though, is like. And I think everyone, for, for most part, I'd say the majority of the committee though is like, right? No one is proposing like, let's just swap them and have like elementary school kids at school like seven twenty, I think, because of like the darkness and all of that. Um, and I think, again, like Will said, it's a lot of discovery. And I think in the groups, like in the small breakouts, it's like always going back to the science. And now we have the science plus the survey data and those are more facts. I think a lot of the conversation is more about like facts, like how people are thinking about it.
Yeah, the only other one, if there is going to be a, a meeting, inform folks.
Yep, there is. I believe we don't have a date for that yet, but that's something I think Mary will work on and setting a date.
Yes.
So that. Yes, I think that's good feedback. Will and I can circle back with her. But I know we have, yeah, I know we haven't picked a date yet. Yes, I agree. And because I think that it might be, right, more than just one meeting to accommodate different schedules. We may need to do one that's maybe during the day. So if your kids are in school and you can't come, or maybe one at night, but we can figure that out.
Great. I mean, I, I appreciate the update. I mean, it's important. Well, I think I do, when I ask what's the tone, what's the feedback on the committee, I think that's, that's, that's the voice we care most about.
Yep.
Uh, okay, so policy review. And um, I think we're going to start off with uh, Andrea, just, if I'm, I think there's one. If, if I, as you go through it, if I'm missing anything, let me know. So, so we're going to start off with the section A, um, foundations and basic commitments um for the second reading. Uh, and depending on your feedback, uh, potential vote, so um, any, uh, and, and that's, I'm sorry, the sections A and it's in the, it's in the packet.
I had, I had one, this is just a small call, call out to start for the section A, um, on page twenty-three.
Bear with me one, if you don't mind.
Yep, nope. I know there's a lot. It's like the non-discrimination on the basis of sex one. Let me know when you're ready.
ACA.
ACA.
Yeah, I don't know why I might, or let me just go to the website. We're telling you one, four eleven is showing up. Okay. Okay.
So it just, I just want to, I'm not sure if it's a just like a typo or we're removing it, but in the paragraph that says the committee had designated each principal is crossed out. And then it says, and the director of student services, Mary Brolle. I just want to be clear on like, was it?
Take out the and.
Yes, or was each principal supposed to be crossed out or are we including principals and Mary Brolle? But yes, my thought was.
That's how I read.
Yes, that's how I read it too, but I just want to be clear, like you meant to cross out each principal and then we just have to take out the and.
Does it just say the committee has designed the director of student services?
Mary Brolle, yep. Yes, I just want to make sure.
Yeah, I was asking, and, and I'm, I'm, I want to make sure I just see it. I, I, I think as well, but what page?
So I'm on page twenty-three.
ACA, non-discrimination.
Do you see it Leo?
Yeah.
On the right page.
Was that the intent Leo, just, just Mary?
Yeah.
Right, that's what I just want to make sure. If that was the intent, was just Mary, we just need to get the and out of there.
The page numbers on the PDF.
Might be different. I'm looking at it like a cool.
Yes, right here. I have it. Yeah, no, I have it right here. Just right there. Cause Dags made it each.
It's a typo, yeah.
And should be out there. Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, yes.
Well, um, we, we were doing that, but actually they told us.
Yeah, I, I asked that, yeah.
So they want us to put names even though knowing that someone may change?
Right, because we vote the name change, we vote the changes when people, when people change.
We'd have to do that, yep. I mean, I thought all the change, like clearly there was a ton of work that I think everyone put into this. Leo, Tim, et cetera. Um, I felt like looking at some of these policies compared to some of the policies that other schools in the area have, they seemed consistent in a lot of ways and I thought the updates, updates were good.
Because they went to MASC.
Yeah, I agree with that, like um, I really appreciate all the time and energy that Leo, uh, Tim, Jeff, Andrea and Michael have put in to get us to this point and Jim Hardy from MASC to get us to this point. Um, I recognize that it might not be like the shiniest project everyone's ever worked on, but it's really important and I think it's going to add a lot of accessibility uh for our community and their ability to be able to like easily search the policies or compare them to other districts. I mean, right now the MASC has a hundred schools on their website and I'm sure there's more that will be added. So again, I think it's great that we're going to be in this place to be on this repository that allows everybody to be able to see stuff. Um, my question with A was, uh, there's a, the mission statement with AD. I don't think that's the mission statement that we approved with the strategic plan. It wasn't.
And just for simplicity, the page, and this is an example of why our life would be better.
I know.
What age Michelle? Thirty-six. Yeah. I think that's the old mission for maybe.
Thirty-six.
I don't think it's been updated yet.
Well, that's the old one.
Yep.
So do we want to?
Just track amendments right now.
Yep.
Yeah, I would say, I would say.
So ACA, we're going to take out the and and AD, we would update the mission statement to the one approved from the strategic plan.
Remember, we talked about that with Jim? We talked about that with Jim?
We did, but I, but I don't know yet, yeah, I don't know if that is coming back unless I've come back in that packet.
Yeah, so, and I would, I would just say, there may be some typos. This may not like.
Yes, I just, I asked about that one specifically because I wasn't sure if it was a typo or if it meant to say school principals and.
And I, you know, I, there may be, you know, the, the manual as it stands today after hundreds of years, I think, is not perfect.
Yes.
Some of which we've, we've lived with. Um, and I, I, I suspect there will be a few things in here that later we're going to want to look at. Um, consistently, we've always taken the view of like, what's the risk?
Yep.
Um, what bad things happen if we make the change? We always try to ask, are we, the ones that they highlight, how are, you know, how are you running today if we were to change that? Can you support it?
Leo?
The goal for this is to get this into a machine readable format as well.
Yes.
On the system. That is the main purpose, that changes and typos can be discovered and we can both them changes easier. Or if the questions or from the community, they can search it easier.
It's much easier to find.
And then if those mistakes do come through, so there will be additional mistakes and, or changes needed.
Yep.
Um, but it was, MASC was insistent not to put up partial, that we do it complete. And so much even what Tim and I pushed back on, they were still insistent. So we're getting to this point that it can be reviewed.
Perfect.
So I guess I would make that point, that it's mu- going to be much easier once it's been quote unquote uploaded with the changes.
Okay. Uh, any other uh comments on that? Um, how did we feel about um take, bringing it to a vote?
Great, I'm good.
Great.
Yeah. Okay.
Motion to approve policy A.
Oh, yeah, just I, we've been trying to do, we should see if there is any input before taking it through.
Uh, not public comment for this.
Okay, all right. Mr. Brown?
Motion to approve. Policy, section A in its entirety with amendments mentioned.
I, I want to make sure I have this right. It's, it's um, policy A as outlined in the packet and agenda.
Correct. Policy manual, section A, uh, foundation and basic commitments. AA through AE. Yep, as amended.
To approve it, yeah, as amended in form.
In form.
Second.
Okay, second, okay. All in favor?
Hi.
Okay, good. Uh, then section B. Again, it's a little bit longer. And uh, I think there was one update, just in case you had been looking at it during the week. Is it, um, Andrea, if I'm not mistaken, we just updated. Yeah, B E D H G, which is consistent with what we approved as a school committee in January of twenty-three. So that was uh, that was one that we, that we shifted or that we, you know, we just updated, so it was current. So no, no effect, no change from what we have.
So my B questions were for B B B E. It says um, select men instead of select board. B B B E. So I think it says where select men, I'll just, so select men in there, yeah. So that whole policy just needs to be updated with select board. And then I had a question for, so in B D F A. It looks like we changed school council to site council. B D F A.
We changed, oh, so on you, okay.
And then the ones below it, B D F A E, B D F A E one, E two and E three.
Yeah.
It's still references school council instead of site council.
In the body of the email. It's the body of the, yeah.
Throughout it, yeah.
Yeah, so you, and it, site councils.
Correct. I saw that there was an asterisk saying later that that's what it had been updated to, but I just noticed those places it had not been.
Okay.
Anything else?
That's all I had.
Okay. Um, so, and, and again, you're okay taking it forward for a vote?
I am.
Okay. Is there any public input on um, on this topic?
No, not online.
Okay. Is there a motion to uh vote and approve the policies, uh, manual section B, um, with the sections as shown in the packet, uh, to vote them in form, to approve them in form?
With the amendments, right?
Uh, to approve them with the amendments discussed in form.
They're moot.
Second.
Second, good. All in favor?
Hi.
All right, okay, good. So um, next up is uh, and at this rate, we've done. I want to make sure I have it uh written as well. Um, so I'm going to group these together, uh, because we now have the first reading of, again, I'm going to reference the packet, but uh, policy manual, section E. Support and services, policy manuals, section F, facilities management, and policy manuals, section G, personnel. Just pause right there, I'll go through the seconds, that, just in case there's any. At this point, it's just to be any comments or, you know, callouts or typos or anything. We're not going to be voting on any of these. Okay. So far, no. And then uh, first reading as well for policy manual, section H, negotiations. Policy manual, section K, uh, school community, home relations. Policy manual, section L, educational agency relations. And uh, Andrea, for policy manual, section I, did we? Yeah, we were going to, yeah, that's what I thought. So we were going to table I and J, just because we just received those back. Uh, and we want to review those. So uh, any, um, you know, up until section I, any comments, questions? There was some good homework done already, so that's okay. Just cut some of those typos. Okay, and yeah, we're going to, um, from an informational perspective, I'd rather just give you, I, I would highly recommend taking a look um at, at I and J, because we do have our policy site on our site. So you can do that if you're looking for it, but we'll bring those up as informational.
You're having trouble falling asleep?
Little light reading.
Speaking of, yeah. No comments, Molly?
She's speaking of life, and it's not going to be a policy.
It's almost graduation, Molly. We got there. Okay, good work on uh, on that, thank you. Informational items and, well, these are.
Yes, informational items, uh, the tech collaborative annual report is in there, the RCOF knew that. You do a really nice job with that, so if you get a peek at that, I would give you a chance. Accepted their quarter three report to the school committee, remember we had to do that starting a couple of years ago. That is in there. And also your NASDAQ spring twenty twenty-four enrollment projection, which you're hot off the press, they came out at the end of last week. So um, what we need to do now is take a look at those projections, compare them to the projections that were done with SPC and get a sense of how closer they are. They look pretty close at first glance, so that's good.
And I think, let's see, congratulations in order, don't we? We officially two uh new members, or two members have been re-elected?
Yeah.
Elected and, or appointed and then elected, so Diana first, congratulations.
Thank you. Congratulations.
First and uh, Leo, congratulations.
Well, that, we're back again.
I believe the, um, one of the rewards is to make sure we do our training. There's some training we have to do, is that what you reminded?
Yes, I did.
Conflicts of interest training.
Did everyone get that?
I had your text, I don't know.
Did you look and see if you have the email?
Uh, no.
Oh, you have to do it tomorrow.
Tomorrow, I honestly had twenty-four hours, so.
Yeah.
Plenty of time.
You have twenty-four hours. Don't need to do it tonight.
I just did it.
Late, late training, I'm watching the masters tomorrow.
There you go.
But I, no, congratulations, I appreciate it. Thank you for serving. Um, I do have a gift in mind, it just hasn't.
Leather bound policy book.
Oh, yeah.
Signed by all five of us.
Will's kind of upset, he's like, hey, I didn't get a gift and I kind of liked it. So we'll, uh, hold out on that, it might be something like, summer workshop. Um, any uh, any, anything else of informational?
Went to the, was it the enchanted bookshop that Blake did last weekend?
Yes, it was.
It was really, it was really cute, but the Friday night performance, um, Mr. James made a cameo at the end. And it was just really sweet and I just want to say thank you to him because it was, it was really great. It was really fitting with the story and it was a nice surprise, I think, for everybody, so.
Yep, pretty cool. And it was another great play by the middle school. This will be their last play for the year.
Yep.
In the new auditorium.
In the new auditorium, which is, is very nice to have this year for those students, yep.
Okay. The last item, future agenda items, uh, school choice hearing uh on May twenty-third. District fees, and I think we'd be asking Michael for your help uh with that. It's uh.
What? He looks through.
Oh, yeah.
Loves when you ask for help. Loves the help.
Actually, yeah, we kept you pretty busy.
Or do it. Where not help is like actually.
Appreciate you doing everything for us.
Just present pretty pictures to it.
And then we, we did bring up one item during the meeting. You can check our minutes as to agenda item we were going to add.
Upgrade configuration was one of them, right?
And voting on the tuition.
Voting on tuition.
And we need to vote on the book.
Those are all for the next agenda, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, vote, vote.
The agenda after the sixth.
Yes, twenty-third, yeah.
Okay.
Motion to adjourn?
I was just going to wait to see what happened.
Second, second, second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Two hours, two forty-five.